Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Mike Baker, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the October 9th meeting of the Columbus City Council. We have an awesome agenda today. It will be a long agenda, so everybody get comfortable. But we're going to move along as quickly as we can. We're just so glad to have you with us to talk about these issues that are so important to our community. But first, as you know, we start off every day, every time we join together, on the right foot. And so this time, we have Pastor John Burnett with us of Hilton Terrace Baptist Church. And we want to ask Pastor Burnett to come forward and lead us in an invocation consistent with his faith tradition. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Let's pray. Father, we gather as many faiths, but with one focus, and that is to serve our city. We ask that you give us the strength to do that. We ask that you make us problem solvers and not problem creators. We know that we can depend on your healing spirit to be here among us today. We thank you for that. I ask blessings on each and every one of those who serve Columbus, Georgia, in the many different ways that we have. And we thank you for being with us, whether we worship you in a Baptist church, a Catholic church, Episcopal. Father, we know you are with us, and we thank you. And we thank you for being here today. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Burnett, now, your church is located at the intersection of Warm Springs Road and Woodrow Farm Road. Is that correct?
Hilton and Warm Springs.
Hilton and Warm Springs. Right. Thank you for your patience, because that has been a huge road project that has just gone on and on, but it's going to get so much better. So we want to commend you and all your congregants for hanging in there for your patience. The city greatly appreciate you.
As always, we're looking forward to great things.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. We are going to jump in here with some folks who are ready to go. We've got the Lighthouse Christian Academy. They're here to help us in the Pledge of Allegiance. One of them told me he was born-ready when I asked him if he was ready. So they are ready to lead us in the pledge. All come forward. Tia Shae has a microphone for you. So come on up to Tia Shae here. Everybody come on up. And as they assemble, if you all would stand and prepare for them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the American flag, attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. If you would introduce yourself, tell us your name and how old you are.
My name is Titus.
Wait, turn around this way and speak up real loud, because we want the camera. Turn around towards the camera like I told you. Okay. No, look at the flag. If you look at the flag, see, that's the TV camera right there. See that? All right. So you keep looking at that flag, and your face is going to be on TV so your whole family can see you. So tell us your name and how old you are.
My name is Titus, and I'm seven.
Okay, great.
My name is Ryan, and I am seven years old.
Okay.
My name is Thea. I am 10 years old.
My name is Cheyenne, and I'm six.
I'm Camias, and I'm six.
I'm Tyler, and I'm five.
I'm Pyri, and I am eight.
All right. And you've got a few folks with you. Now, are those your teachers that came with you? I want to ask you to stand if you're with these pledges today, and let's give them a round of applause as well. Thank you all very, very much. Will you come back again soon and help us out if we need it? Great, we'll give you a call. Okay? Thank you. Have a good day at school. All right. Well, we're going to, first, we've got a presentation. Maybe we'll hold on just a minute with that. And we've got the minutes from September 25th of the council meeting. I want to ask if there's any edits or corrections to those that anyone saw. We've got a motion and second for approval. All those in favor, please state aye. Okay, great. And we also have for today a published hearing, and I want to turn it over to the city manager. This is a public hearing, shouldn't take but a minute, but if you'll hit his microphone. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am going to be calling on Director of Planning Rick Jones to administer a public hearing on the 2038 Comprehensive Plan. It is on my agenda later for a vote that we can move forward as required by the Department of Community Affairs. But he made an in-depth presentation at a previous meeting, and so we will not be going through that entire presentation, but we'll simply open the floor. And if there are those who are here who want to comment on what they heard two weeks ago, then the floor will be open for that. So with that, Director of Planning, Rick Jones.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. I will be brief in my comments to you. The city manager has informed you that we did make this presentation to you at the last council meeting and went through it, I hope, in great detail to you. We have, we published the actual copy of the plan itself that the last meeting showed to you. Several of you have actually looked over it and give us some comments back. Counselor House, thank you particularly for your comments. We have taken those and are actually incorporating them into the document itself. Purely and clearly, simply, what we want to say about this document is, this is the plan for the future. This is how we plan to develop our community over the next five to 10-year period. It is in draft format, and will stay in draft format for some time now. But the idea that we're asking this morning is you approve the resolutions for us to submit it to the Department of Community Affairs to meet our timeline of October of 2018. In doing so, we will, when submitting it, DCA will then review it, make their own comments, any suggestions or additions or deletions they want to make, and we send it back to us. And then, in turn, we will incorporate that into the document, bring it back to this council again for actual final approval. So, Mr. City Manager, that's what we're asking for this morning, for your consideration. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone here who wants to make comments and hear either for or against the document, we're certainly welcome to hear them. The document is also, may be found on our website at columbusga.org/planing, and you will find the document there to look at in a PDF format. So that, Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it back to you.
And so, Madam Mayor, on my agenda, we can delay asking for a vote until that time, but let me just, for those here who have not decided to speak and perhaps would want to speak, I'll read them what we are going to be asking council to vote on, on my agenda. We'll be requesting that the 2038 Comprehensive Plan be updated to reflect a new, modern comprehensive plan. This plan is largely based upon the input gathered from multiple public meetings. We've had many public meetings, citizen and technical review stakeholder meetings, surveys, websites, and other multiple involvement channels. The goal of this plan, the goals of this plan are to create local excitement about Columbus's future, engage in community members, and encouraging them to help move the plan forward, and to provide Columbus leaders with a concise, user-friendly document that is applicable to the today decisions of the city. And so, an in-depth presentation PowerPoint was provided to the members of council, to those present at council, and to the public just a couple of weeks ago. And so if there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak, comment on the 2038 Comprehensive Plan, the mic is available for you at this time. It appears, Madam Mayor, that no one wants to speak, and so that will conclude the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Well, we have something we're going to be moving up to the mayor's agenda that's on the city manager's agenda, our Government Center update. We have many people in the audience who have come to observe and perhaps participate in this discussion. But as you all know, we have had two fairly catastrophic failures of systems, the water system in this instance. And so we've got a lot of moving parts. We have our courts displaced. We have the desire to get our courts back in to something that is functional, that meets their needs. And last time, we heard not only of sort of where that process is, but also of the need for some $6 million worth of immediate investment to the tower as it exists, just to continue it as being inhabitable, frankly. And so council obviously had a lot of questions, and the courts and the community have had a lot of questions about how we can move forward as expeditiously as possible. So with that guidance from council, with very specific requests of what they wanted to see and who they wanted to hear from, we have had the city manager pull together an update. And so I'm going to turn it over to him at this time, so we can get all of you all who have been so kind to rearrange your schedules to be here, back on out into your daily life. So, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. If you would, let's see. Yes.
Do you have any idea how long this is going to take? The reason I'm asking is that there are also a number of people in the audience who are here for the city attorney's agenda and so forth that, you know, I anticipate that this is going to be a lengthy discussion, and I'm just not sure that we're being fair to those folks who were closer up on the agenda to ask them to sit through this, quite frankly.
Well, I know that we have contacted everyone on the public agenda to let them know that this would be quite lengthy. I know also that we have asked the judges, as council requested, that judges be here. And so they've rearranged hearings to be here in the morning. I don't know, you know, how long.
I just don't think it would take very long to run through the city attorney. Maybe I'm wrong, and it may just be me, but it seems to me that...
But we always try to accommodate everybody, as you know.
I understand.
Yes, it's just that, you know, we made specific representations to those who rearranged their schedule to be here at council's request. You know, Mr. City Attorney, do you think you can run through yours fairly quickly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Let's see if we can get the city attorney to move as expeditiously as possible. We want everybody to have their day. So, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll go through this pretty quickly. We have some business items to vote on. First one up is the regulation of short-term rentals. It is ready for approval, or ready for a vote, anyway.
Move approval.
We've got a motion and second for approval. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing that there's none, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
All right. Second item is the zoning at 43521st Street. Applicant, Mr. Scott Henry, is ready for action.
Please approve.
Second. We've got a motion and second for approval. Is there any discussion on this item? All right. Seeing none, you may record your votes electronically.
That passes.
Yes, it does.
All right. Next item is zoning at 150417th Street. Mr. Benefield Florist is ready for a vote.
Please approve.
Second. We've got a motion and second for approval. Any discussion on this item? All right. Seeing none, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
All right. Next one, we've got a public hearing on 1600 Blanchard Boulevard. Mr. Smallman. This was continued from last meeting, going to light manufacturing as the proposed use for bulk storage. You want to briefly tell them what this is about?
Yeah, so it's...
And give your name and address.
Tony Smallman, 6 West 7th Street, Columbus. We're just resounding the back warehouse section of 1600 Blanchard Industrial Boulevard, back to light manufacturing industrial, which I think was its original zoning classification. It was changed in the past. We're leaving the front engine Victory Drive, general commercial.
Okay. Any questions around the table or in the audience want to be heard?
Not at this time, but we can check the audience. Any questions, those who want to speak for or against?
All right. Appreciate you being here. We'll vote on that in two weeks. The next item, Mayor, is a zoning hearing at 7277 Sorrel Court, going from residential office to residential multifamily. Mr. Chuck McClure, is he here? Mr. Jones, have you heard anything? All right. I think we'll continue that to the next meeting, Mayor. Continue that first reading. Next item is the first reading of an ordinance relating to stockpile materials. There've been some news articles about this type of offense. This puts in some new penalties, graduated fines, and then on the fourth offense, there is some jail time included for a fourth offense within a 30-day period. Any discussion on that?
Don't see any at this time.
All right. We'll bring that back for a vote. And then we have one...
What did you call for? Was there anyone who would like to speak for or against that particular ordinance? Okay.
All right. Got one resolution that needs a vote. This is approving an intergovernmental contract to provide certified operational services to Casita-Chetahouche County and their water system. This is contrary to some news reports, not a takeover, just technical support and operational support, but it is ready for adoption.
Move approval.
We've got a motion and second for approval. If you would, record your votes electronically. And it does pass.
All right. That's all we had listed, Mayor.
Wonderful job. Okay, thank you. So we'll go back then, okay, to our prior plan of discussing the Government Center. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. We've talked for some time about issues, concerns at the Government Center, as we have had a number of maintenance issues related to flooding. And we told you that at this meeting, we would bring you a comprehensive update on the Government Center, and that's what we're here to do today. I wanted this update to come from not just staff, but we wanted to bring in some other professionals to weigh in on the state of the Government Center. We wanted some other professionals to look at options for moving forward with our situation, whether we should renovate the building or if we should be looking toward new construction. And so I brought together a team of professionals in Newt and Clemmons, or Aaron and Clemmons, Construction Management Services. We've not engaged them before, but, and so when they come forward, they'll start out by telling you a little bit about them. They've done a lot of work throughout this community, work that you are aware of. And so Newt, Aaron, and Ryan Clemmons have been working with us. We brought in 2WR and Heck-Birdishaw Architectural Firms, and you are aware of them. They've done a lot of work with us on a number of different city projects. We had both deputy city managers, our finance director, our public works director, inspections and codes director, as well as fire EMS, fire safety professionals in our own Columbus Fire EMS. And so we brought this dynamic team together to do a comprehensive look at our Government Center. And so they are going to be coming today to talk about the state of the Government Center, options for moving forward, whether we should renovate or be looking at new construction, et cetera. We're going to have our finance director talk about funding options, whether it be renovation or new construction. And we are going to have public works director, Pat Beigler, come and do a recap of the maintenance, safety concerns that she spoke with you about a few weeks ago, where she talked about what it would take to put that building to a status that we would be able to operate in it for a short period of time over the next couple of years. And then I am going to have our inspections and codes director, excuse me, our finance director is going to come and talk about funding options. And then the inspections and codes director is going to come and talk about, or do an overview recap on what he spoke with you about a few weeks ago, and that being repairs, construction at the Government Center related to the flooding with proceeds that we received from insurance claims. And so all of that is going to take place here this morning. And, Madam Mayor, it's going to be, as you know, quite lengthy. And I do see that Representative Carolyn Hughley did come in, and I see that Tom Gale is here from Georgia Municipal Association, and I think what he's going to do, and I know he's got to get back to Atlanta, should not take very long.
Yeah, no.
And so I'll pause for that.
I didn't know everybody was here for that. So let's go ahead and get that done. Hello, Representative Hughley. And also, Mr. City Manager, the one thing I would correct is that you pulled together this team, some members of which were at the express request of counselors.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so you just didn't go out there and start picking people yourself. Some of them were recommended by counselors.
Yeah.
So, all right. So we're going to get Tom Gale up here, who is a great partner for us with the Georgia Municipal Association, and also Representative Carolyn Hughley. If you'd come forward, please. As you can see, they're listed on the mayor's agenda, and we want to go ahead and get this wonderful recognition on the agenda. Yes, sir?
Well, thanks, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, I'm Tom Gale. I'm the Director of Government Relations for the Georgia Municipal Association. We're proud to have Columbus as a member of the Georgia Municipal Association, GMA. I see you've got a very lengthy council, and I will be brief. But I am really honored to be here today to present a GMA Champion of Georgia Cities Award to a true public servant, and I'll tell you a little bit about this shortly. I do see on your agenda later today, you've got a discussion of your legislative agenda. That's very important, to express your will and your concerns to members of the delegation. It really helps us a lot when they hear from you all, as your lobbyists at the state capital, and we're able to point to specific items that the city of Columbus or any other city in the state has adopted. It really helps us. I'm sorry, I won't be able to come to your hometown connection this Thursday, but someone from our staff is going to be here, Ruchi Patel, our deputy general counsel is going to be here. But those discussions are really important. So I had a wedding anniversary this weekend, and it kind of reminded me that the key to a good marriage is understanding that your spouse is an equal partner. That's very important. And that concept really carries well between state government and the state legislature and local government. Respecting those boundaries, both in a marriage and at the state and local level, makes both the partners in a marriage and also the state and the local government stronger. Many of you know that Georgia has a constitutional home rule provision that gives certain powers to local governments. However, this is very important, it gives the General Assembly the ability to run roughshod over those local decisions if they so choose. Well, recently, the wireless telecom giants have been wanting to put small cell towers, and I know that you all are dealing with that here in Columbus, without any real concern to some of the local decision-making about where those towers should be. The champion of Georgia cities, who I'm here to recognize today, had an open ear and was a supporter of local decision-making for these past two years as we fought that fight with the telecoms. Recently, legislation was introduced, Senate Bill 2, that would have created a one-size-fit-all permitting process, so that Adel, Atlanta, Columbus, and Zebulon, and every other city and county in this state would have to follow the same exact permitting process, regardless of the size of your permitting shop, or the complexity or amount of permits that are coming in. Well, this champion of Georgia cities was a supporter in stopping Senate Bill 2. I could go on and on. I know you've got a voluminous agenda, but I'm just truly delighted to be here to represent GMA in presenting what we call the Champion of Georgia Cities Awards, and it's just given every two years to a small handful of legislators who have earned the distinction of listening to you all and expressing concerns that local taxpayers matter when it comes to state laws at the General Assembly. So if, Representative Hughley, if I could bring you up, on behalf of the Georgia Municipal Association, it's my honor to give you a Champion of Georgia Cities Award, and I really appreciate your service.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Representative Hughley, would you like to say a few words?
I know your schedule is full, but let me just say thank you. And as we come upon the next hometown connection, those sessions are very important to us because they tell us what's important to you. And I got to say that I have a little extra help in terms of what the city wants, because it spills over into my pillow talk sometimes.
Yes, exactly.
So I want to say thank you, and it's good to be a partner with you, and thank the citizens of Columbus for the opportunity to serve.
Well, thank you. And I'll say, everybody says, but it's true, that we have the best delegation in the state. I know Tom can't say that, but we can say it, can't we, Tom? We can brag and boast. And you all do represent us so very well, led by Calvin Smyrie, of course, Richard Smith, and Debbie Buckner, and we've got John Peasold and Joshua Coon, a whole bunch of good folks. So thank you all so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Yep.
And so again, Madam Mayor, just to go back to your point, you know, I did receive some recommendations from council to at least talk to some other professionals. And quite frankly, I'm glad that that advice was given, because in talking to Newt, Aaron, and Ryan Clemmons, and to hear from outside professionals really shined a light on the direction that we need to go with this. And so I'm glad they were willing and available to help us with this matter. Before, I ask Newt, Aaron, and Ryan... to help us with this matter. Before I ask Newt, Aaron, and Ryan Clemmons to come forward, I do, Madam Mayor, I think you've already recognized judges and court-supporting agencies like the sheriff and the clerk of Superior Court here. But I see maybe there are a couple of lawyers out there, but I see Judge Richardson. If you are a judge, or you support the courts, the sheriff, and the clerk, Clerk Shasta Glover, if you all would just stand so that, and I see Judge Gottfried here, and, but--
Judge McBride.
Yeah, Chief Judge, obviously, yes. And the scarier thing is I saw Chuck Williams sitting next to him early on, and so that bothered me. But we've got the clerk of municipal court represented here. But, and I think we've got some lawyers here. If you're a lawyer and you're here for this, just stand and be recognized.
Thank you.
And so this is an important discussion, no doubt. When you get the chief judge and other judges to come out, we've got council-elect Charmaine Crapp here. So with that, Newt, Aaron, and Ryan Clemmons, would you come forward and kick us off with this?
While Ryan's passing those out, I'd like to say how happy we are to be here to help. And we hope that what we present to you will be something that will be of benefit to you.
I'm Newt Aaron. This is my colleague, Ryan Clemmons. He's also my son. We're part of Aaron and Clemmons, who are a local CERN. We started working in Columbus about, let's go to the next slide. We started working in Columbus in 1992. And I commuted for about 10 years from Atlanta. And then a number of people in the community here convinced my wife that living in Columbus would be a lot better. And thank the Lord for it, because it has been wonderful since we moved here in 2002. We're a program slash project management firm. Now, I'd call your attention to a couple of things. This concept has a lot of names. It can be called program manager. It can be called project manager. It can be called owner's representative. What we do is we represent the owner in the design and construction process. On a full job, we typically help select the architect and engineering team, and then we help select the contractor, and then we help manage the process all the way through. We've worked in Columbus and throughout the southeast during this time. Over our careers, we have over about a million dollars, a billion dollars in project experience. We both started out in construction. I learned a little bit about what I was doing in the hotel business in the 1980s, in which we managed the construction of about 75 hotels throughout the United States. Representing the owner, we were in-house, working for corporate days-in and then holiday-in, and constructing and designing those hotels. We represent now, we became the consultants in 1992, and we represent now a variety of owners, government, private, and nonprofit. Some of the projects that you would be familiar with, we've done over 100 projects in Columbus since we started work here. But some of the projects would be the Columbus Library, and which actually you guys were our clients, because the, administratively, because the splotch was done through the city. So we were actually hired by the city to represent the library board in that case. That was about a $25 million project. Another big project is the National Infantry Museum and Soldier Center, which is about $110 million. It's a very complex project of a lot of desperate elements and funding sources and challenges, to be perfectly honest. And then the last one, what I'll call your attention to, we've done a good bit of work, some of which was with 2WR and with Heck Burtishaw. We've done a good bit of work with the school district in their, several of their splotch campaigns, working on the Dorothy Hyatt School, and the Aaron Cohen School, and the George Washington Carver High School. And the last one we had was right next door here, the Fine Arts Project, along with a number of other smaller projects. And then I'd call your attention finally to the Whitewater Project. That was also a very complex, many parts, many funding sources project that had to be coordinated with the Corps of Engineers. So we bring some experience. What we normally do, people ask sometimes what we do, and I jokingly say sometimes we tell people what to do. And after they laugh a little bit, I say, but sometimes we ask, sometimes we plead, sometimes we beg, is that we try to take the owner's desires and bring some order to it. Often owners are not quite sure what they want to do, or how to get there. So we help organize the team and help bring together all the information and the resources and the horsepower that is needed to translate that into complete plans and specifications, and then construction. So that's our role. What we're going to show you here today, what we've been asked to do, and the word, I think, that Isaiah or the mayor used, excuse me, the city manager or the mayor used, was an independent look. And that was our charge, is we want somebody from the outside to look at this who's not been a part of producing what's been done to date on it. So we've used a number of resources. I'd like to call attention right now to our partners with 2WR and with HBA, who've been useful in translating to us and conveying to us what has happened previously through the mayor's commission, as well as thinking through other options that came to mind in the process of looking at this. What you see before you now is sort of an outline of what we're going to cover today. It is going to take a little while, and it may take longer depending on your questions. But anything you want to bring up will be fine. We're going to show you what we use, show you our methodology, what were our objectives, talk a little bit about the physical status of the government center facility, and the status of the process of looking at getting a new one. Then we're going to spend a fair amount of time on factors to consider in thinking about options. And then we've got a couple of options that we want to present to you, and a way to go forward with those options that will allow you to make the best decision on the whole thing. We'll have time for questions. Now, if you want to ask about something while I'm talking, I'm okay with that. I've got stuff I want to cover, and I'll try to keep on track on that. But if you want to talk about something along the way, I'd be happy to address that. All right, let's go forward. All right, I mentioned 2WR and HBA, and I can't overemphasize, I can't emphasize enough how helpful that they have been with their previous knowledge and in thinking through what the challenges are right now. We obviously use the mayor's commission report. I would not be telling you the truth if I said I studied all 1,000 pages. But we looked through all of it, and we particularly studied the options and the recommendations that were brought forth. We had meetings with the city government staff, the city manager's office, public works, engineering, fire marshal, inspections and codes, with all the staff, and they were very helpful also. We reviewed the government center maintenance and life safety report that I believe you've seen, and we'll get an update today. And we reviewed the insurance file as well. And importantly in it, whenever you're thinking about construction, particularly when you're thinking about schedule and cost, we had conversations with contractor resources, had no obligation and no commitment of any kind, but just because they want to be of help, and we have a relationship with them from the past. Those included, on the demolition side, Bill Miller with WT Miller, Batson Cook, and Brathfield and Gorey. Our objectives were to review and evaluate the current status of the existing government center, consider and assess what's been looked at previously, including all the inputs that we could identify, to identify and consider the constraints and other factors affecting efficiency of the space, life safety, schedule, and cost. And then to identify the best options with schedules and an action plan leading to council decision and approval as to how to go forward. All right, let's talk about the government center facility. It was designed and constructed almost 50 years ago. It's gone through numerous, numerous internal changes, and changes in how it's accessed. Some of these were due to September 11th, 2001. Some were due to the increased awareness of courtroom violence and the need to protect the judicial environment. Some of it were just due to changes within the city. The, many of these changes up to the last few years were done really more on an ad hoc basis. We need to do something, let's build a wall. So we'd build a wall, and we'd put in new doors. And sometimes that was in contradiction to some of the building systems, such as HVAC, such as fire alarms, such as EGRs, you know, being able to get out of the building in case you have a problem. The building's characterized by failing systems. The HVAC system and its controls, cooling towers have already had to be relocated from their original position. The building often is, everybody will be burning up on one side and freezing on the other side. So the HVAC system is not doing well at all. The emergency generator has failed completely, and a temporary one has been put outside. The fire alarms are out of date, and we're having extensive water piping and drainage piping deterioration, some of which you already know about. There is a, in the use of the building, there's a not advantageous mixing of administrative departments and judicial functions. The judicial functions with the need to separate prisoners, to separate witnesses often, to have locations where discussions can be held in these narrow corridors right outside the courtrooms, they're very difficult. The elevators are quite small in terms of serving both the public elevators, serving the crowds that are there for courtroom functions, as well as serving the prisoners and the judges. And finally, there have been many, many changes in codes and design standards since 1970. We now have addressable fire alarms, where you can tell exactly where a fire alarm signal is going off. There's been a much greater emphasis in that time on the danger of smoke. That fire often is not the issue, but smoke is the issue. And that's led to things like the need for a fire stop at the curtain wall, that if a fire started on the first floor, smoke could just go up inside the wall up to the next floor and carry on up. And as well as stair pressurization, which is a concept that you, through fans that are activated when the fire alarm goes off, pressurize the inside of the stair and keep any smoke out. But you need both those, because if you don't have the fire stop, and there's lots of smoke outside the stairwells, they're not even, people aren't going to be able to get to the stairwells. So it's very important. Sprinklers are almost universal in any building of any size now. And we have no sprinklers now above the first floor. There's an insufficient number of elevators. There are inefficiencies. This building would never be built today. The tower would not be built today with this configuration. Normally, the size of the floors is much larger, because that creates the ability to arrange departments concurrently, to use a central core of services and elevators that serve a larger area rather than just the small areas of this. The building is very energy inefficient. The skin, the glass between the structural steel columns, excuse me, the structural concrete columns is not made in a way that is energy efficient. It's not insulated. And in addition, we really don't know, a study would need to be made, as to the structural capacity of the building as it relates to codes. There are no, as I understand it, there are no obvious structural failures. There is one crack, I think, on the 11th floor. But there's no settlement, there's no, there's no evidence that we're having a structural problem, which probably indicates we're okay, but it still should be looked at, since it was designed. The codes have changed markedly in relation to wind resistance with hurricanes and things like that, and with seismic, that the ability of a structure to withstand an earthquake or a hurricane, they're required to be much stronger now. The process that we've gone through, I'll just mention briefly, the mayor's commission report, which occurred through about nine months in 2017, the plumbing leaks earlier in 2018, we've had, been conveyed to us by the city manager's office, some additional input from the judges. We've seen the maintenance and life safety issues, and then we'll have this report, which we hope will bring you closer to making a decision. Things to consider in thinking about schedule and phasing of any work that you do include the funding, which you're going to hear about later. What I don't think I'm exaggerating by saying the extreme urgency of addressing the life safety deficiencies. These things are very serious. Fires occur all the time, and I can tell you right now, nobody planned the fire. They occur unexpectedly. So nobody knows when that could happen. And anyone who's working or using the building could be at risk if some of these deficiencies aren't corrected. If you're currently having to, because of the leaks, have temporary facility usage, there may be need for additional of that, depending on how you choose to deal with the fire safety deficiencies. In reviewing the data that we received, the first thing that we said was that the space needs and the programming. Now, space needs efficiency is figuring out, I need so many people in this department, and I need so many people in this department, and they need to do certain things, and this one needs to be next to the other one, is that a very able job has been done by John Hutchison and others in the city manager's staff of looking at both the judicial and the nonjudicial side of that. But we found through our experience, and I could give you several examples, if you're interested, where professional look at that concept can really yield efficiencies. It can show you things, because it tells you what people are not, just what, not what we're thinking about here in Columbus, but what people all over the country, or all over the southeast are doing in terms of judicial layouts, in terms of administrative layouts. And part of it is, you know, the city could even consider how they function, you know, in this evaluation. So we consider doing that by an independent as a first stage is one of the most important things you can do. We're going, at some point in our conversation, whether it's today or whether it's another day, you're going to be interested in what do these things cost. And I can tell you right now, unequivocally, the most effective way to reduce cost is reduce the square footage. Now, I'm not saying to squeeze it below what you need for both current and for future, but to get the most efficient square footage will give you the most reasonable cost. So it's very important to plan properly and program properly before you start designing. Another thing these people might be able to bring in the equation, I understand the judicial departments, and please understand me, I don't claim to be a judicial expert, but I would get people who were, is that there's a lot of need for storage. And storage is something that perhaps could be managed in a way that would be more cost-effective. And we can talk about some options on that as we go forward with one of our options. I know there's a reluctance to think about that because of control and need for accessibility, but it still should be looked at, because it could be much more cost-effective to have storage. You might have some storage that you need for ready reference, and then other storage that would be in a remoter location that would not be needed as frequently. So it would, but it would be much less expensive. The, we're obviously aware of the community considerations with regard to historic preservation, that there's been a lot of conversation and positions taken on the need to preserve this architecture. And then you, of course, will have the political considerations. How do you satisfy the public in terms of going Some other specific constraints is that there's a Some other specific constraints is that there's a court management system that is in operation today on the fifth floor of the tower, and it uses big computers and tapes as opposed to solid state. And a new system has been ordered to manage this, to do this, which would be cloud-based, but that new system won't be available until July of two thousand and twenty. So we're operating under the assumption that you would not be able to remove that space in the tower before then. A point I want to mention to you is, we're in, the current cost environment is extremely negative in terms of cost. It's very volatile, it's unpredictable. We have things like tariffs with China that are affecting cost of steel, are affecting cost of drywall. We have another outside influences, plus everyone is so busy, you can't even get people to figure jobs. And we're telling you this from our own experience in working with three or four current jobs right now, that it's really a big issue. And what that tells me in going forward with how we might proceed or how you might be able to proceed, would be very important to have solid construction input, people who know as much as possible, it's possible to know about this cost environment. And once we get to what are the options, because that'll be your first decision is to approve what the options are, we're going to need to study those options to determine more accurate construction cost and overall project budgets. The numbers that were in the Mayor's Report were clearly identified as construction only, but that's not all it takes to build a building. You have to have soft cost, design cost, program management cost, and you have to have FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment that go into the building. So those things will have to be added on after you agree on the options, they'll have to be added on so you can make a decision based on the total. All right, we've got, I want to talk about four options. Two of them, we don't think are any good at all, but they've been mentioned, so we felt like it was worthwhile just to mention them to you. One is what I'm calling greenfield, new buildings for both judicial and nonjudicial on another site, somewhere else. Now, from a construction viewpoint, that'd be very advantageous, you know, because you wouldn't have anything in your way, you wouldn't have to worry about demolition, you wouldn't have to worry about where people are going, you're just doing a normal project. The problems come into, one is that site is considered, as we understand it, the county seat, and it would take legislative action of some kind to allow that even to be done. And plus, there'd be a lot of political considerations too. We've always been on that site, it's a symbol of Columbus, we may not want to do that. But the biggest problem I see it is that you've got, when you, the day you move out after the new building's finished, you've still got this old building that has all the same problems. And so how are you going to sell it? Are you going to demolish it then? Are you going, what are you going to do with it? So it's a big real estate problem to do this, so we don't think that's a very good option. Another option that has been proposed is a floor-by-floor renovation plus an addition for administrative departments because there's not enough space to handle both the judicial and the administrative in the current facility. We don't think this is a very good idea. You would have longer exposure to the life safety dangers, even after correction. Some of them can't really be corrected too easily with it occupied. You'd have at least a five-year construction time because you can't do everything at once. You have to do it piece at a time. It still has all the mixing problems of the judicial and the nonjudicial uses. There would be significant noise and dust problems during construction and we'd still have to do an addition, so it would change, it would change the look of the building, even from a historic perspective, to do this. So this is our recommendation on those two, right there. Let's move on. Now, let's talk about two options that we really think have some value. What we're calling Option One is, and please understand, I'm not proposing at this point either of these options, I'm trying to point out pros and cons and what the aspects of them are. But what we're calling Option One is all-new construction. Now, as an aside, I'm going to mention the first item on the list there, but we'll come back and talk about that because there is an option on that, as to whether you move out of the building or you spend the six or seven million dollars to do the life safety upgrades and the condition upgrades, or you stay in the building, spend that money and stay in the building. You would not be able to stay in it until you were ready to do the final, if you did that. So it's, but that is an option, we'll come back to that. You could move out of the tower, find other space for everybody that's still in it, in the wings, and then go forward with the construction. Or you could spend the additional money for sprinklers, for stair pressurization, for fire stopping, for plumbing system repairs, for fire alarm, for HVAC controls, spend that money and stay in the building until you get to the point on the schedule where you've got to get out. But you'd still get to that point if you're going to do the complete renovation. You'd demolish the wings, then you would construct the new judicial building because we think that the best way to satisfy the judges' needs is in a new building. Now, we're going to have, in our own minds and particularly in the judges' minds, the short-term fix and the long-term fix may work in completely opposite directions for them. Because if the short-term fix is, let's get these courtrooms back in operation, you're going to spend the money and then you're going to get out anyway for a while temporarily to allow the longer-term fix, whereas if you go ahead and build a new building, you're able to satisfy all those needs and you do it as quickly as you can to get them back in operation. So to get the best end result, you'd have more short-term pain being out of the current courtrooms, but you would get the best end result in the process. You'd also demolish the tower in conjunction with funding and other constraints and you'd construct a new admin building. Both, and this option requires, because the increase in space, the construction of a new parking deck across Ninth Street. All right, so just think of that as demolish, all-new. That's the way to think about that option, right there. Option two is to have a new judicial center still, because that gives you the best result long-term, but to renovate the tower for admin. The sequence of that would be move out or fix these temporary things first, demolish the wings only, and build a new judicial building with parking underneath, and then completely renovate the tower for administrative space. Now, I'm going to bore you with some numbers right here just to point out some things that in one sense are negative, but in another sense might be a positive. What you'd get out of completely doing that is you'd save the architecture, you'd save the historic piece of it. You would lose some efficiency because the floor plate still has problems. The life safety issues still have the problems, they'd have to be fixed, but they'd be part of an overall project. Our definition of renovate is complete renovate. We believe that the building would have to be stripped down to the frame, really. The white pieces that you see, the vertical pieces there, appear to be structural concrete and they're sound. As I said, we've seen no evidence. We still need to do some additional checking, but we see no evidence of structural issues on it. The windows would have to be taken out completely, all the interior partitions, and then extensive interior renovations would have to be done to make the stairwells better perhaps, to have different ways of running sprinkler risers up through the building, to perhaps even add elevators to the building. So it's a complete renovation to do that. The inefficiency of that plate doesn't go away, and I'll give you an example of that. The program, the current program for new judicial, or new admin space is about a hundred thousand square feet. Well, the tower has two hundred thousand square feet, but that program of a hundred thousand is contemplating a new building, you know, a more efficient layout building. So when you move it into the less efficient floor, our architects estimate that that might, that might affect the space usage as much as twenty, twenty-five percent. And if that were the case, you know, that gets your hundred thousand up to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty. And a possibility that I thought of that might work, there's been some interest expressed in, we could move the functions that are currently in the government access, annex, into this building because there'd be room for everybody to be together. And then it would leave, still leave some space for growth in your admin. So we believe this option is worth considering because of the historic preservation aspects of it, as well as the possibilities of the use of the space. It wasn't, it's not studied enough to say we wouldn't have to put stairwells on the exterior of the building to satisfy the codes or whether we could do it all interior. But if we were able to do it interior, you wouldn't have any, really any change in how the building looks, except probably in terms of entrance. I think there's been a general desire that the way we go in is not the best way in terms of its presentation to the world or its convenience. So the judicial center standing on its own would have its own way of entering that both for the public and for prisoners and judges and secured law enforcement, but we'd also need to think about that in terms of the tower as well. All right. We've got a few slides here that just kind of show you visually what these options might look like. This is the current configuration now with the tower and two wings. And then our Option One is all-new judicial center and administrative building. And this is really, I'd point out, the same as Scenario Three of the Commission Report. Here's the existing, and then both would be demolished, and then both would be put back, plus the parking deck. All right, Option Two works a little differently. Here's the existing, and then we take down the wings and then build a new judicial building. Now, I, in case anyone probably sharper than me, I noticed this at the last minute, is that the parking deck is shown first. Parking deck can be built when it needs to be built, but it's only in the finished product is when we'd have the parking deck, so don't think that we'd immediately go out and build it. Okay. All right. We've prepared some schedules based on what we know now, because I knew that was one thing that you were interested in, is what are the timelines in this? But the schedules have to be considered in light of what are the assumptions that we're using to produce the schedules. So we've listed the assumptions and I'd like to go over them briefly. First assumption is that the verification of the programming that I mentioned and developing a schematic pricing package can be started immediately. Let me digress here for just a moment. The process that we're recommending to you is that you don't know enough to make that decision today, we don't think. Now, you may think you do, and if you do, that's fine, it wouldn't hurt our feelings. But what we tell all our clients is, you need to understand the scope and the quality and you need to understand the cost. Now, in traditional design, bid, build, construction, you might, in this case, you might spend six, seven million dollars or more for design and then you get a price and you say, whoa, I can't stand that. So what we recommend to all our clients, and it's what was done at the later stages on the library, because they converted at the last minute, but certainly on Whitewater and on the projects with the school district and on the infantry museum, is that you put together a schematic pricing package. Now, what that means is there's enough detail that you have a pretty good idea it meets all the codes, that it fits everything in, that it looks the way you want it to look, that it sits on the site the way you want to look, and that you have at least narrative descriptions of mechanical and electrical and other systems that go in the building. And then you go ahead and do an RFP for construction manager at risk and get them on board and have them price it at that stage. That gives you a more solid budget to use in making your evaluation. We're at, the numbers that have been in the Commission Report and any numbers that anybody can do right now, they're in the category of what we call big guesses. You know, they're three hundred dollars a foot, four hundred dollars a foot, two hundred dollars a foot, whatever, so much of space. They're big guesses. And the whole theory of construction estimating, which I learned in being a contractor for fifteen years, is little guesses. Because that way, if the little, if this little guess is too high, this one might be too low, they'll balance out, they stand a lot better chance of balancing out. So you provide enough detail for the contractor, using what's been provided, plus their own knowledge of current pricing and current availability of materials, they're able to do little guesses to produce these budgets. With these two options, if you choose to say, yeah, we like those two options, because one of them demolishes and gets all-new with all the benefits of that, and the other one preserves the historic aspect of the tower, if you like these two options, you really need to take both of them to that level. Go ahead and finish your planning, your programming so that instead of a hundred thousand, maybe it's ninety-five thousand, maybe it's a hundred and five thousand, but knowing what the right number, and the same on the judicial. The judicial program right now is two hundred and sixty thousand feet, I believe. But finding out whether that's the accurate number right there, doing enough of a plan and then get these numbers. Then you would have schedule, scope, and cost to make your decision on. So we recommend that process highly. But the first schedule assumption is that you'd be willing to do that, you'd approve it, and we'd go forward with that at once. The next assumption is that funding can be provided for either relocation or life safety upgrades. You either got to get people out of the building or you got to go ahead and do some of the work right there. And I would remind you, if you decide to stay in the building, which I understand some parties would like to do that, because it would get the courtrooms back in operation, that you would lose, you'd lose a number of the, or you'd lose all of what you're going to do to upgrade and make it more safe if it's demolished, and you'd lose much of it even if you renovate it. We would assume that once the numbers are done, and you're going to see in here, to do this first item here, verification of program and schematic pricing, will take about six months and then about a month for the contractor to do the pricing. So you'd be ready to make a decision in seven months. And then we've assumed in our schedule that you would make that decision, including any public input, including anything y'all needed to do within ninety days after that. So that's one of our assumptions. We're also assuming that funding can be available when needed for construction and demolition. You're going to hear more about the funding, obviously, from the finance department, but in layman's terms, this would mean bonds or other temporary financing would be available if needed until a SWASH can be approved and take over. And we're basing the schedule on that you guys are making a fairly current decision on whether you're going to go forward with these options and this planning process right here by November thirteenth. Now, all right, this, the schedule, what I'd say to you is that the first group of activities, the blue, is the design phase. So it tells you what you're going to need to have done before you can start various aspects of it. And it factors in the fifth floor IT department. The next group of activities, the, you can kind of see conceptually in the middle, are the Option One, and then the ones at the bottom are Option Two. Option One finishes the, okay, we're going to focus on those in a second, but just looking at the design, we're going to show you the design right here, right now. We've got to go ahead as of November thirteenth. We've got to go ahead as of November 13th, then we'd get into the programming for about three months, and then producing the packages for about three months, and then the contractor to price. So it gets you, gets you the packages ready for your final review and decision in June. And then the bottom part of here is to complete the design to allow construction.
Is this a typical timeline? I mean, do these kinds of projects typically take six or eight months to get to the June 9th?
Depends on whether you've done the program or not. The programming sometimes is already done when you start thinking about that. But in this case, we think the programming at least needs to be verified and re-looked at to see if there are any, it's so important to see if there are any revisions that need to be made to the program. The last thing you wanted to do is build too much or too little. So it's, it's, this is a very typical, this is pretty tight in this case. We just, and then after that, we've shown, is it eight or nine months? We've shown nine months to complete the design. For this size project, that's good. We took longer than this on the infantry museum, I'll tell you that right now. And it was very complex, too, but this is a complex building and needs to be done right in every way. But this is, this is very typical of what we see. All right, these two are the more detailed, I was treasurer of the MEEF organization for a long time, and when I'd hand out the financial statements, I always tell them I made the print small so they couldn't read it. So I'm not trying to do that for y'all in this case, so you can read this a little better. But it shows you demolishing the wings, demolishing the tower would be a later, a little bit later in completion, then start the judicial building, and then the, start the admin building, and then do the parking deck. The parking deck can be moved back and forth on this schedule because it stands alone almost on itself. That schedule, with what we know now, would complete in June of 2023. The second schedule, which is the new judicial building, and then leave the tower in place, is a little more complicated in terms of how you cut things off and protect and make sure nothing's going to fall down. So you have to be careful about, about this one. But this one, this one completes about the same time for the judicial building, perhaps a month early than that, but it's a little bit longer on the renovation. So the total project is about five months longer in option two than option one. Yes. All right. This is what I've tried to kind of summarize what I'm saying to you. Either move out of the tower or immediately begin correction of the life safety deficiencies. We, as professionals with responsibility to our clients and to the public, we can't emphasize that enough. You really need to fix this stuff if you're going to stay in the building. You really need to fix it. It's important. And it's important to our community not to have a big problem. It'll be important to the people involved in the problem, for sure. So it needs to be, it needs to be addressed. All right, the next step would be proceeding with the current team, because you have architects who certainly are very involved in this, for you to authorize phased professional services, where you'd have the program manager and the architect engineer firms to confirm and assess the space needs, check all the department alignments and support services, do the structural analysis, and develop these schematic pricing packages so that you can have the cost, the schedule, and the scope to consider in making your decision. During this time, you would want to go ahead and do an RFP and get a construction manager at risk on board to be able to do this pricing. Plus, even at the early stages, they provide valuable market input. They can say things like steel frames better than concrete frame, or because of the way the current market conditions are, are the schedule requirements on that. So haven't, and that's the way the Fine Arts Center, it's the way Spencer High School was done, it's the way the infantry museum was done, is having that construction input is very important. All right. All right, and then, as I said, once you get those, they'll develop these budgets and refine the schedules to make sure they're correct. And at that point, in seven months after release, you can weigh your options and make the decision at that time. Now, and then after a decision's made as to which you would do, you'd proceed with the final design and construction, coordinating with all the constraints. I want to mention again, because I think it's so important, is that if, and if you feel like more studies needed on it, it certainly can be done, is getting those courtrooms back open. And one thing that has to be emphasized is what we're doing here has to be coordinated with the insurance, the repair of the current leak, because it really doesn't make sense to repair all that stuff if you're going to move out of the building immediately. So I'm not saying I know all the answer to that, but that's something that ought to be looked at and how it might work. But the desire to get back in the building will not give you the best end result, judicially, in our opinion. And they're going to have to move out anyway, if we're going to build, even if we're going to build a new building for them, they'll have to move out at some point so that we can demolish the wings and build a new tower. So short term and long term is going to have to be balanced against one another in terms of that decision. All right. All right, and our final comments is, just because I can't emphasize it enough, life safety is a big issue, big issue, and I can't emphasize that enough right now, so. Move forward. All right. Now, I'm sure y'all absorbed all that, and you don't have any questions. I'm open.
All right, and we may need a little bit more discussion on your thoughts about what exactly the judiciary is going to do if it's option one, option two. I think that they would really want to, I've got a counselor, I want him to speak, but if that's not his question, and of course, I want you to address whatever it is, he has teed up for you, but I think, you know, what exactly would you propose, or can you propose that?
Well, that's really a space, it's a real estate issue. It's what spaces could be available and could be used, and what's the appetite of the judges for being in temporary space for that long? I understand their reluctance to not be in dedicated spaces that they're used to, but you just have to find additional spaces. So that'll take some more, some work to do. I see that.
Okay. And just so everybody knows, we did meet with the judges, their preference is to be put back on 11, 10, and 9, and to go ahead and get back started on 11, 10, and 9 while we make these decisions. And the issue with that is, do we spend the $6 million for the life safety issues? And so that's, that's the give and take, because courts have to be put back into service in some meaningful way. And so I, let's just put a pin in that, and.
Well, let me, Madam Mayor, let me comment. That, that can be done up to a certain point. In fact, you could keep the tower in operation if you do the life safety portion of them at least. Two things I'd say, number, and then get the new judicial tower built and just move them over there. That's going to make the overall project a lot longer, because you won't be able to, I don't believe, in a meaningful way renovate that entire building with the judges still in operation. So it's going to make the project a lot longer. And the other thing is, I had the conversation, I can't remember if it was with Judge Richardson or Judge Mullins, but we were talking about getting back in operation due to the leaks, and the concept came up with, you know, it could leak again tomorrow. You're still under a big risk. The repair of the systems that caused the leak, you've already seen, I believe, in earlier reports, that's not all that easy, figuring out where the valves are and where the cutoffs are, and, you know, what piping systems need to be put in to avoid that possibility. In fact, in some ways, just for the sake of conversation, say we replaced all the pipes on the eighth floor or ninth floor, and that makes that part of it stronger, it'll put more pressure on, you know, more negative pressure on the rest of the system right there. So there's, if you do what the judges have said they'd like to do, then you do stand a risk of, they're going to be moving out again anyway due to additional problems.
Okay. I think it's probably worth additional conversation. Let's get to some of the counselors, and unfortunately, Bruce, something's happened to my screen, so if maybe Jeremy can come and we can work on that, and if you will, turn on Counselor Garrett's mic, please. Thank you.
Nud, I appreciate everything you did with this report. What would be the minimum bare bones we could do for the courtrooms, just to get them up and functional? I've switched law firms and been in that role in three months, and I still haven't had a hearing date from back in June. So I know everybody else is frustrated.
All right, I understand, and John Hudson's going to report on that. The, there is a schedule for getting the insurance proceeds worked out and going ahead and doing it. And I believe, John, you jump in here, please. I believe the schedule showed that it'll be spring. I don't remember if it's early spring. Being back in operation, if you.
Hudson is going to come forward shortly and talk about the repairs, the construction, based on insurance proceed as a result of all the flooding. And of course, I'm going to have Director Pat Beigler talk about fire safety things, things she talked to you about a few weeks ago. And so, you know, based on what we presented to you a few weeks ago with insurance proceeds, repairs, construction, we anticipate a January, no later than February timeframe for getting the judges back on those floors. And simultaneously, if we decide that that's where we want to, that's what we want to do, go back on those floors. And of course, that's the judge's preference at this point. Then Pat Beigler is going to be talking to you about the fire safety things that Mr. Aaron and Clemmons have talked about today. And so we could do the fire safety, take care of the construction on those floors, get them back in there, and we don't know when something else might happen, but we feel certainly that there's a good chance something else could happen.
Have any other temporary options? Because if it sounds like we're definitely going to have to eventually be in some sort of temporary structure, have we looked at any real estate in the meantime that we could immediately get them in?
We're looking every day.
Okay.
And I will say to you that, you know, I'm wrestling with, if we, if we use temporary structure, whether we lease and then renovate to be suitable for courtrooms, or if we purchase, then, you know, we've got something off the tax roll that we're now trying to renovate. You know, do you spend 6.3 or 7 million dollars to handle fire safety issues and the insurance money to get them back on the floors and let them, and go back to business as usual for as long as they'll last? Or do you go and lease space and spend 6 million or 10 million to renovate to make them suitable? Either way, you're going to lose the money that you invest. And so I think, you know, I've got to work with Newton, Ryan, and staff, and I think together, we're going to try and figure all that out.
Okay. I mean, the indication I get from the judges is that they would be happy if they could just enter the courtrooms, even if it's not, fire safety is not built back up yet, and I mean, I'm not sure what we can do legally for that, but.
Well, we want to address fire safety for the judges, for the citizens, and for employees. And so if, and I think I said to you at the previous meeting that, you know, it would be an investment that we know that we are eventually going to lose, but if we go out and lease space and renovate, it's going to be an investment that we're eventually going to lose. And we need to decide whether we lose the investment in place, or do we lose the investment somewhere else as we work to new construction or renovate. That's a decision that we've got to make. But either way, and from what I can gather from all of this, there's going to be an investment, and we're going to lose that investment.
And the risk of continued being out of service and the risk of any fire issues is greatly reduced if you go into another space.
Yeah, because you just can't say go to another, because if you take the judges outside of the government center building and you go and lease a building, I mean, the sheriff, Sheriff Donald Tompkins is going to have, it's going to be crazy, because they are obligated to provide security for courtrooms and judges. And they've, they've figured it out at the government center, and now you're going to have it at the government center, and you're going to have it at some offsite that you got to construct, alter, that they can provide the best security for the judges and the courts and the citizens. So we got to work together and decide, you know, which is the better option, you know? And, but I know what the judges have expressed, and I'd like to accommodate them if we can.
That's what I won't do. That's wrong.
All right, we have Counselor Woodson.
I just need a little bit clarification and a point. Thank you for the presentation. I'm a little bit concerned with the first graph where we were seeing failing building systems. I took it a little bit in the direction that we weren't doing the right thing, and I think we were doing the right thing when an emergency came up and we were repairing, you know, reacting to the situation. The building is 50 years old. Back then, they didn't have the technology or the things that we need today. I'm kind of like in a little bit of defense of staff, because I took it like we weren't doing the right thing, and I feel we were. I don't know if I've just misunderstood it, but I wanted to make sure that that was clear, because I think our staff's done a marvelous job with the limitations we have and the structure of the building. I think they have been superior. I don't know, maybe I misunderstood something, but I wanted to make sure that it was very clear that I think we've done everything we could with the things that have been given to us and the stature of that building.
If I'm.
I was just going to say, since I said it, I can respond, but I'll wait for you.
Well, and I was going to just say that, you know, I didn't take it that way at all. You know, I took it that from the chronology that they provided. It shares, it shows you that the building is almost 50 years old, and the building had challenges the day that people were allowed to go in, into the building. And, you know, I don't, I'm not going to get into all of the challenges it had, but it had been value engineered, and it wasn't the building that it was intended to be based on what has been shared with me. And then over the years, walls and doors have been put in, and wiring has been run through the ceiling, and that goes back from, you know, the day that they started to occupy the building, and it just evolved over the years, and we're where we are. And so I don't think they were pointing the finger at anyone, it's that.
Like I said, I don't know if I understood it correctly or not, but I just wanted to defend, you know, our staff, because our staff's been telling the same thing that your firm has been telling us, our staff has been telling us. It has been no secret. You're just confirming everything that our staff's been saying we need to do.
Counselor, let me say, nothing could be further from my intent. We've been very impressed with the reports and the actions that have been taken by Public Works in the last several years to correct as many of these processes and things that were done and problems. We've been very impressed with what they've done, so it's no reflection on the staff at all.
Okay. Well, thank you. Well, I took it that way, and I don't know if anybody else did, so I just wanted to clear the air in that sense. I seen, when I seen the pictures of the proposal towers, I see that the court building is almost as tall as the administration building. Is that how many floors we need? Is that how many? Is that how many floors were short? How many judges do we have? How many courtrooms? Do they each get a courtroom of their own? They don't share?
The pictures that you saw certainly are based on the space needs assessment that was provided, the amount of square footage. But I would say, to use the term a good architect friend of mine does often, is that they're really more illustrative. They're to show you the massing and to show you how the buildings might look. They're not, they're not based on, we figured out every bathroom and every corridor and every stairwell and everything. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't read anything into that. There are, there are attempts to be based on the space needs assessment, and that's what's led to what you see right there, but that, some of that may change as we go forward.
And Counselor Woodson, I had a sidebar. I couldn't, I didn't understand fully your point, but I do think that some of these assumptions, and they're assumptions and can absolutely change, is that the sheriff's office would be in the judicial building, the district attorney would be in the judicial building, the solicitor would be there, you know, some other things like that.
Clerk of Superior Court and Municipal Court.
Clerk of Superior Court, Municipal Court, the, you know, maybe the marshal's office, you know? So, the people who work with the courts every day, maybe the juvenile courts will be there, perhaps the municipal judge will be there in his courtroom. So, more than just we normally think of state superior court judges.
That's correct. The list is as long as your arm, as far as the judicial functions.
And then, building for the future as well. We've got seven superior courts now. A few years ago, we had five, and then we had six, and now we have seven.
Right.
A few years from now, we could have eight or 10, so...
Well, that answered that. My other question was, because I don't wanna leave the impression that we're not having court, we're having court. It's just that the time to go into court is more limited because of the space and availability. I don't want people that were listening to it would think, oh, they're not having any court hearings. We are. They're doing their job every day in a, in a bad situation, but they're doing their job. It's just taking longer because of the space. And I tend to agree. You know, I want to do whatever's possible for our judges to get them more comfortable and so we can make these cases and move them a lot faster than it is, you know, today. I appreciate all this because this is a lot to digest and process and make that determination. I'm very happy that we are having this conversation and we can't, because that was my question too, Mayor. You know, what we're gonna do with them? Where are we gonna put them in the meantime?
Right.
And that's very critical. And sometimes, and sir, I apologize if I seem a little pushy, but, you know, the constituents that I have that listen to this, sometimes with all the conversation going and everything going around and all the numbers and technology, they want a little bit more clear. So, my job is to bring it down to the, you know, basics and the clear understanding that the courts are working. They're just not working as fast because they don't have the room.
No apologies necessary.
Let me do this at this time. I wanna call on Chief Judge McBride to come up and address that because Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge and I had the opportunity to go to an all-judges meeting. We've been out now several months and they've been operating in the makeshifts that we've provided, which I think were, you know, reasonable emergency responses. And you don't need to go, you're probably gonna be right back up, so don't get too terribly comfortable. But I wanna say that one thing that, that maybe we don't appreciate because we're not there day-to-day is it's more than just a delay. I think there are some real safety issues about criminal hearings being held in the old Tax Commissioner's Office where there's 80 people in there with the prisoners standing right next to them, not having safe entry and exit or some of the things. And also now, because of some of the laws, Judge, I want you to address this specifically, they are under obligation to hear criminal cases in a particular timeframe. And because they're working with less than the resources they need, of course, that's sucking up almost all their time. So, the civil, non-incarceration-type cases are having to be pushed, pushed, pushed. Well, I know you think, oh, well, you know, if that person's lawsuit about, you know, that real estate transaction didn't go so well, gets put off for six months, what's the big deal? Well, you're talking about divorces, child custody issues, adoptions, kids that are in foster care that families are waiting for them and they can't get responses. You are thinking about things where there's been, you know, God forbid, a tractor-trailer and the person's on life support, and somebody's gotta decide whose insurance is covering this person's health care. I mean, there are some serious things. It's not just all, quote, boring transactional work, but sometimes that boring transactional work is holding up a bank or a company with 10 million dollars. So, and they're sitting there with their business hanging on the edge. And that's what we're starting to hear now, is not only not having a full address of the criminal system, which we have constitutional responsibilities to respond to, getting people, you know, out of the jail if that's not where they belong, getting people into the jail if that is where they belong, but it's these other things of child custody issues, people in marital situations they really need to be released from. So, Judge, if you would kinda speak to that...
And before you go, that is my reason. Everything that you just stated, I don't want people that are hearing out their thinking, we're not even considering or worrying about their situation. So, we're on the same sheet.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that the constituents know that we hear them and we understand the predicament they're in compared to the predicament that we're in and how are we going to address it.
The effect may be a little bit more dramatic than we think, Judge. Would you kinda tell us, what is this day-to-day impact of the courts?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, City Manager Hughley. I appreciate the opportunity to come forward. I will tell you, just to give you the numbers in real time, so to speak, this morning's jail census for the Muskogee County Jail was 1,123 inmates. Those are generally persons awaiting trial. 1,000 is what is generally considered the early warning system. Anything over 1,000 becomes a problem. It becomes a safety issue for the sheriff and her staff. I will tell you also, another set of numbers that you need to bear in mind, and this responds to Counselor Woodson's question a little earlier. We have seven Superior Court judges. We have two State Court judges who use those courtrooms on the top floors of the building. We have gone since June 18th from having seven courtrooms at our disposal to having three. And it's just not realistic to think that you can run a judicial system for a city of 200,000 people with three jury-ready courtrooms. Simply not realistic, and it's not going to happen. The reason the jail census is not higher is because Council and the mayor had the foresight several years ago to introduce the Rapid Resolution Program, which has certainly played a role in keeping the jail population under control. The sheriff also, through her foresight, has developed an early release program. But without those two programs, I think that it would be safe to say that you would be looking probably at 1,300 to 1,400 inmates in your jail this morning. So, that's just the very real reduced to numbers impact of how this is going. Following up on what Counselor Garrett said a little earlier, the reason that we have been able to keep the numbers as low as they are in the jail, and I think any reasonable person would say they're too high, but the reason they're no less high is because the domestic cases and the civil cases are simply having to take a backseat. The Constitution of the United States gives the criminal cases certain priority, and we have been giving them that priority. But I will tell you that the backlog on the civil and the domestic cases is building as well. So, that is something that we need to bear in mind. Heard a couple of comments about keeping the judges satisfied, making us happy. We are always grateful. We certainly appreciate that consideration, but I will tell you that our main concern is being able to do our constitutional duties and have a place to hold court. That's what it all comes down to. Our interest in going back in those floors is not because we fail to grasp that we must at some point move out. We understand that. Under any scenario that has been presented today, at least the two that did not have the big red X over them, it's gonna require us moving out. We get it. But in the meantime, the big question is, where do we have court tomorrow? Where do we have court next week? How do we keep this backlog from continuing to melt? And those are really the issues that we have before us. And I would say that there's a long-term issue, and that's which of those options that Mr. Aaron put before you, which of those do you pursue? That's your call. I'm glad it's your call. I would hate for it to be our call, and we do not envy you that. I've told several of you previously that we do not envy you that responsibility. But the short-term and the immediate, where do we hold court, is the big question. And frankly, I don't know of very many options for holding court. Several people have suggested, well, why don't you go out to the Sears Building, or you can fill in the blank. But the Sears Building has no holding cells. The Sears Building has no jury rooms. The Sears Building has no Sally ports. That is not a serious or realistic consideration or option for you. So, I'm not quite sure what other options you have to deal with this very immediate, very acute, short-term need, other than going back into those floors, patching them up, doing what it takes until further space can be made available for us longer term while one of these other options are being pursued. So, I guess in summarizing what the mayor asked me to respond to, the need certainly remains acute. It has been acute since June 18th, when the first flood took place that caused us to have to move out. We are continuing to function under an emergency ordinance of the City Council that designated other places to hold court, but we still have a very acute need, and at this point, it's becoming more acute. And that's why I began by telling you those numbers that I put before you a few moments ago. Does that respond, Mayor?
Yes, I think so. Absolutely. And I know at the end, as we've said, what the judges' preference is to be put back, you've also heard, it is, you know, and they've said, look, we don't need bells and whistles, you know, just, just get us functional, make us, I think the phrase was, at least as safe as it was before. And, and so, we could do that. And then, you've heard the rub is, just to put a point on this, the rub is what you heard from Mr. Aaron, there are and have been for some times very serious life safety issues. The higher in the building you get, the more severe the life safety issues become, you know? So, as I told the judge, as we were having a very frank conversation, a very great conversation, was, you know, boy, I can't put people back on that 11, 10, and 9, you know? But that's when they came around to, through that discussion, well, make us at least as safe as we were before. And then, you hear some folks saying, well, you know, that ain't good enough. So, we've got this balance. How do we get these courts up and running? I think the judge is right. The quickest way to do it is to put them back where they were before. I do think there are other options. Any building can be outfitted, you know, with some of these things, but there're gonna be courts and hearing rooms and some makeshift safety accommodations for prisoners and so forth, but it will be a temporary location. So, it is one of those classic tough decisions with really a primary function of the government is to run a judicial system, and it is in crisis, under our present situation, an unsustainable circumstance with life safety issues and functionality issues related to the constant threat of renewed flooding. It's just, it's a tough situation. So, I appreciate, Judge, you sort of encapsulating that, kinda where we are, but that is the judges' preference. Put us back on 11, 10, and 9, in at least the safe conditions we had before, and then make these other decisions. Judge, you wanna sort of comment further?
Or, or some other place, no less safe. But wherever it is, we would ask that it be immediate. The situation is something that we're doing our best to work around and juggle around, but at some point, there's just a limit to how many balls you can keep up in the air at one point without dropping one of them. And so, the, the numbers that you have, I think the trend line, I've been sharing them periodically, I think with the mayor and the city manager as well, so that we're all looking at some of these same numbers. The trend line has been a slight increase, a slight uptick, but it is at the expense of getting the civil cases heard and tried and those domestic cases heard and tried.
Well, and it is amazing what can be done. I know we talk, you know, it has some humor to it because it's a dramatic example, but, you know, when you look at what they do in the Middle East, when our troops go in and they build hospitals and they build schools and they build court systems, literally in a couple of months, right? In the Middle East, in these dramatic circumstances they have, well, maybe those wouldn't satisfy, but we might be able to do something like that temporarily. So, those are some of the options, but, you know...
We did have experience with the campers in the immediate aftermath.
Yeah, and the other campers.
And you sorta do what you have to do in an emergency. But at some point, we're looking, the way I have assessed all of the information, we're looking at a multi-year effort, regardless of which path you choose to go down. And so, we need a place to have court during the interim, and it needs to be more than what we presently have.
All right, Judge, sit tight if you can. We got Counselor Thomas.
I do want to echo some of the things that have been said. I've had a couple of conversations with people who are looking at domestic cases. And if, if it's your child custody case that is being put off until January, it's, that's a hard thing to deal with. And I did, I did talk with one of my friends who does security for the courts and said, well, why can't you take these domestic cases, say, over to the Trade Center, you know, and hold court at the Trade Center? And the response that I got back was, have you ever been to one of these cases where the husband and wife are at each other's throat and you don't know what's gonna happen? And you don't, you know, when you have a murder case, that this person has already committed murder, but when you have a domestic case, you don't know what might happen. So, you can't take some of those chances. I do, I've also had some conversations with a couple of the judges about getting back into those courtrooms as quickly as possible with a very minimal amount of work, if you will. Let's put some carpet tiles down on the floor and do the shoot rock. Your offices, though, Judge McBride, are also impacted. And I know that that's one of the concerns that you have, is going from an off-site office into the courtrooms. But I am assuming that you can continue to do that for a while, as long as we can get you the courtroom that you need. You can put up with the office business for a while. Is that right?
That's correct. I mean, the office situation is not ideal, having offices four blocks away from the courtrooms. Judges are at their most productive, and this is the reason you usually see the judge's office right behind or right next to the courtroom, is that's, that's the ideal working environment for a judge. But the major focus for us and the major need, if we could state, state a list of wishes, would be to have more courtroom space as quickly as possible that is jury-ready.
And, and one of the things that I've heard this morning that I do want to, we may just have to suck it up, and that is that if we find space to move the courtrooms to off-site until we can get things done, it's gonna cost us a good bit of money and then, and we're gonna sort of lose that investment, if you will. That money will be spent and we still are gonna have to move you back and do courtrooms and all that. We may just have to lose that money. That may have to be figured into the plan that we do. I'm, I'm not one to sit here and tell you that we, we need to spend five or six million dollars to do this and, you know, then we'll have to spend it again. But I do think it's important that we get as quickly as possible those courtrooms ready and available for the judges to do, not only because the judges need it, but because that person that has the child custody case needs it.
And just following up what you just said, we do keep track of our caseload. The largest chunk of cases that we have are the civil and the domestic cases, and that has always been the case. The one that you usually read about in the newspaper would be the criminal case, but the average... But the average hour, the average day of the average judge, you're probably going to be handling a child custody case, or an alimony case, or a father or mother who can't get child support. And those are the types of cases that really hit home. Concerning using the Trade Center, I'm told by the Sheriff's Office and Major Massey that those cases, because of their volatile nature, are the cases that you usually want in a very secure environment, such as can only be found in a courtroom. So that is, I think, one reason why the Trade Center may not be ideal there. We tried, we used it for one case, which was a civil damages suit over the summer, and I think it worked out fairly well. But for the more volatile domestic relations cases, every one of which is a zero-sum proposition at some level or another, that's probably not the best place, and I don't think anyone has given it consideration for criminal cases.
And one final thing, Mr. City Manager, and I don't know where we are in this process, but if we're looking to move the courtrooms off-site for a while, have we done any preliminary work at this point to see what may be available in the community? Are there places that might be available? And I, I'm not asking you to say the Sears Building or, you know, whatever, but have we started that search? Are we looking for those kinds of things?
As I said, we are doing that every day, and I've actually, I guess, a month or two ago, assigned it to one of my deputy city managers to identify space that we can, could possibly, not just lease, but purchase, purchase. And because we need it to have some options. And in fact, I saw space on Friday, and I called the mayor and asked her to call people that I felt she knows to say, you know, we would be interested in your building. And so I think she called them and dealing with that. So that's every day. You know, but again, I guess, you know, I'm caught in that I know the urgency of getting the courts up and going, and the fastest way to get that done would be deal with the fire safety concerns in the Government Center building, and deal with repair and constructing, reconstructing the courtrooms as a result of the damage, not necessarily making them, as Counselor Garrett said, we're not trying to give you something that you're going to live in forever, but we want it to be functional. But if we are trying to meet a January, February time line to get that done, it is my opinion that we can best do that by dealing with the fire safety concerns in the Government Center building, and renovating or getting those courtrooms to a usable status. And so I'm not against, don't be clear, going outside and looking for space, but we've got to identify that space, we've got to negotiate lease agreements or purchase agreements, then we've got to identify the funding that we're going to go and renovate to make the space suitable for courtroom and affiliated functions, whether they be Superior Court, Clerk, and so forth, and so on. And that is going to take more time than I believe we have to. And then the other thing, you know, I know the sheriff, I just feel like they're going to say to you, I need another 150 new deputies to be able to provide the security necessary in these off-site locations that we're trying to construct to get them to courtrooms, when they've got the resources they need, if it's at the Government Center. And so, you know, if we want to do it as quickly as we know the judiciary want it to happen, then the Government Center is the place to deal with the fire safety and do it. And if we've got more time than the January, February timeframe, and you're going to be happy with that, we could probably try and finalize some lease agreements, short-term lease, when I say short-term, just a few years, and then pour money into making those space, that lease space suitable.
Was it hard to say a short term is a couple of years? I would think it would be.
It was difficult. I was trying to find the right word, but I just couldn't at the moment. But we do know that, as Newt Aaron has said, it's going to be a few years. And so I could take it either way, but if we want to do it and do it quickly, and have all of the security in place that we are accustomed to, then the Government Center is, would be the option.
Well, I know that we have, the judges and the folks have been out of those courtrooms now for four months. We're looking at another three, four months, maybe until we can get them back in there, and we want to do that as quickly as we can. I also want to say to Mr. Aaron and to Mr. Clements, thank you for this report. This is the most comprehensive report that we've had of this nature, and it's a lot of information that we needed, I think. And I just want to thank you for your efforts to do that for us.
And Counselor Thomas, you know, I think it was you, maybe, that referred us to them. And so I say thank you because I think it's been, I'm pleased with their work. And I will say that if we are going to do it, Judge, by the January, February timeframe, you know, I'm going to have Director Pat Beigler come and talk about the fire safety issues and other systems that would need to be addressed if we're going to stay in that building. And I want Director Hutchinson to talk about the insurance claim and what we need to do to get that going. But we will have to come back to you with a construction agreement rather quickly if we're going to stay on that timeframe. You know, we just, we've got to move. We've, if we are talking about January, February, we're going to need to present a recommendation to this council, and we'll need your approval to move forward with putting boots on ground in that Government Center building, and get people to work and to get those courtrooms right. And then we would need to engage someone to deal with fire safety. And if we can't bring that back to you in the next meeting, the fourth Tuesday, certainly by the second Tuesday in November, you know, we need to be, we're going to continue our effort to identify lease space, and then when we do, we've got to negotiate a lease, and then we've got to go into the building and determine, you know, what renovation we would have to make to the building, and then get someone to go to work in those buildings. And just from leasing space in the Carmike Building, it's pretty expensive to lease, when you're talking about leasing 100,000 or more square feet, and then you're going to go and renovate it. So we've got some decisions to make, and it just depends on how quickly we want this to happen, to get the judges operational to their satisfaction.
All right. Thank you, Judge. Anything else for the judge? How about for Mr. Aaron? Anything else? We...
Mayor?
Yes?
I would add one thing that would be possibly worthy of consideration. The duration of the construction of a new administrative space, assuming the tower were demolished, is about 12, 13 months. That has to be thought through in terms of how, what I'm going to say on phasing, but the possibility exists of building the Judicial Center and leaving the tower in operation until you get into the Judicial Center, and then at that point, tear down the tower, and then you'd only add, just say, 12, 15 months to the overall duration of the project. Whereas if you renovate the tower, you know, leave it in operation until you move into the judge's building, and then renovate, that adds two and a half to three times the amount of time. Because renovation process is about, standing alone, has been estimated to be about 37 months compared to 13, 12 or 13 months. So that is a possibility of looking at in a way that would leave, avoid having to go outside for space.
Because...
Well, let's see if I can possibly recap so that, you know, we can know what we need direction from for counsel. Absent other direction from counsel, we are going to go forward with renovating 11, 10, and 9, and putting the judges back in there, because we have no other authority to purchase anything else or do anything else. Should we be able to find another facility and either move the non-judicial governmental entities out of the building, move the courts down to 4, 5, and 6, or, you know, and improve the life safety issues by getting them closer to the ground? That's problematic, but could be done. So absent some direction from counsel, we will go back to 11, 10, and 9, and that will require the $6 million investment for life safety issues, roughly $6 million investment for life safety issues. If there is some willingness to go ahead and find another temporary place, because we're going to make a decision to either gut the tower or to build a new building, then we will turn all of our resources toward that objective. And so those are sort of the directions I think we need from counsel, and certainly not today, but in the near future. Otherwise, we're just going to go on our sort of rote plan of putting people back where they were before, with all that that implies, as you have set out. So I just wanted to kind of tee that up, because it's a lot of information, you know, what is it exactly that we need direction on? If we don't get alternative direction, then we'll go back to putting people on 11, 10, and 9, unless, of course, we can find something, another building, that relieves us of that. So that's kind of where we are. I have another counselor that wants to speak, but go ahead. Did I not state that correctly as far as...
I think so. Finding another building with the square footage that we could put all of the court functions, obviously, we don't want two courtrooms on one side of town and two on the other. We want to keep you together. And that requires finding a facility in a suitable location with the square footage that's needed to make all of this work together. So yes, Mayor, you're right. And so, you know, I know you're going to go to another counselor, but, you know, following Mr. Aaron, I'm going to have Director Pat Beigler to come and talk about those life safety things and the cost that she shared with counsel a few weeks ago, so that you know exactly what they are and what they potentially would cost. And so those life safety things would be addressed simultaneously with the construction, if we go back to the Government Center, simultaneously with the construction repairs in the Government Center, though the life safety issues that would need to be addressed could potentially take longer than the repair construction on 9th, 10th, 11th courtroom-related. And so if I say something wrong, you...
No. You're accurate on that. If we start immediately, my assessment is the life safety issues, the fire stopping and the stair pressurization and the fire alarm, probably six to eight months. You know, we try to make them sooner, but if you start, and the one I would start with immediately is the fire stopping. Stop the smoke from coming up through the building, if you do have a fire, and that's the way. But it will take a little bit longer than getting in February or March.
Yes.
So the judges and the courts would go back up, but the fire stop would not be in at that time?
It would be in process. It would be in process. And we could make decisions as to which floors to do first. You know, that...
Yeah. To minimize the noise in the courtroom...
You'd probably want to do the courtroom floors first, because they're in construction. There's nobody there for the next few months.
The most risk, because they have the longest way to go to get out.
Exactly right.
So, okay, all right. Counselor Davis?
Thanks, Mayor. I think with money, you can fix anything, but the truth of the matter is, you've really got to understand the source and effects. And we live in Columbus, Muskogee County, and I think we really, we understand the market that we live in. I'm a little, look, there's hardship here, and then there's reality, and then there's politics that all are intermingled in all this. And certainly, there's still a lot of questions that, in my mind, that still need to be answered. I've taken in some of the information today. I'm still connecting the dots, and I've got questions, and I'd still like to look at this matter. You know, it's kind of hard when you've got figures dancing around in your head, trying to work up a performal on all this, and then you've got all these other obstacles, too. Those are hardships. It's reality. And I think that in the situation, that there's going to be some, well, let's just say, some aspect of being uncomfortable across the board, no matter what the solution is, until it gets fixed. And it's going to take time. I mean, you've got to understand, it's going to take time. So working in those perimeters, I think, is a challenge, but I think everybody needs to understand that and where we're at today. Yes, you know, I'm hoping, it's my understanding, of course, I've been out of the country for a little while, but it's my understanding that we've already started on all this stuff and trying to address the matters with the judicial system and our courts. If not, you know, I'd ask the question, why not? But, you know, I think regardless, you've got to move forward. You don't have no other option. You've got to move forward and get it fixed the best way possible. An extension, maybe, into some other facilities, maybe, maybe the thing, that's going to take time. And certainly, how to work that out. There's probably some buildings out there, but it's going to take time to get them satisfactory, at least, in order that you can hold court. Again, it's going to be uncomfortable, but, I mean, that's just the world we're living in right now. Mr. City Manager, I would like to personally, instead of going through, you know, we've already had a lengthy discussion, and it's going to continue. I've got a lot of questions. I'm not going to sit here and ask those questions or try to pick things apart, not going to do that. But I would like a chance to sit down with Mr. Aaron and kind of discuss some things, because I still have questions to matters that were talked about today. I know that we keep focusing on the life safety aspect of it, but we've known that since the 80s. I mean, it's documented across the board. We know that. I mean, we knew about it when we were having counsel in the other Government Center, you know, and I don't think today, all of a sudden, it's a prevalent matter. It is, okay? It is, but I don't think that's something that all of a sudden, you can fix it without taking some major steps. And that's the reason it hasn't been done all these years. You touch it, based on codes, you've got to do the whole building, and then it goes back to the money, amount of the funding issue. It's just, it's been that, you know, that cycle for the longest time. I don't think you can just put the problem on that area. I think there's a lot of issues here. You know, personally, in my mind, I'm sitting here thinking, what is the most, you know, and then you've got to consider the other factor, which is the taxpayers. Anything you do, I mean, there's going to be an aspect of debt to this and debt service. It's going to be there. So that's going to be a heavy burden to carry in our community. But, you know, I can... But, you know, I keep asking myself, what's the most, and there may be some challenges, and I've seen, I've heard some of the stuff about buildings being renovated, et cetera, but it's done all the time under circumstances, and still where businesses have to operate, they still have to make money, they still have to keep things going. I keep asking myself, what is the most cost-effective, efficient way to get that government center back in operation and fixed? And there's some trades that need to be addressed, some systems that need to be addressed. But at the same time, there's other, you know, I'm asking myself, as long as you have those, Mr. Aaron said it earlier, as long as you have those courts up on the top floor, I don't know why they're up there anyway, to be honest with you, but as long as you have them up there, you're always gonna have the risk and the liability. It's gonna be there, whether you put in a new system or not. You're gonna deal with the same issue. You know, and I question that about getting those courts down to a lower area, or you're gonna always deal with that matter of liability of dealing with disruption. It's gonna be there. And there's no guarantee that, like Mr. Aaron said, you put in a new system, and a year later, you have another leak and something happens. Hopefully, you can put in some safety measures that you can quickly address some of those issues and slow it down a little bit. I think that can be done to mitigate some of the problems, and I would hope that that's done. Some of those things are done, trying to get the government center back up in operation from the water damage. But it, there's a lot of, I think, unforeseen matters here that just adds up to time, and it's gonna take time. You can see, no matter what the option is, but the most cost-effective, quick, efficient way to get it done keeps registering in my mind, and I don't know where they're yet. It's still being bounced around. I would call it still in the planning stage, which will further add to the time as we go. And then you're dealing with a government entity which brings in the public aspect of it. You can't expect this body to make decisions without engaging the public, the ones who will ultimately pay for it. So with that being said, that's all. I know you've got more people that wanna talk and...
Yeah, and I can arrange...
...that's just my comments, but I'd like to talk with Mr. Aaron.
We'll arrange a TAM to talk to Mr. Aaron and Clements. So we'll follow up with you on that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I add? You outlined the issue and the question you need the council to address, perhaps, in terms of getting the operation, everything back in operation. The other thing that I believe is, and it goes to something Counselor Davis said, is that you need to get the planning process going. So the other thing I would say is in your court is to go forward with this limited confirmation of space planning and efficiency and sufficient design, sufficient, to get to a solid price for those two options or for other options that might include different phasing, as I discussed, of leaving the tower in operation as long as we could. But that process needs to start, because until it starts, you're not gonna have a new building ever. You know, it's got to start in order to have completion.
Yeah.
So that's the other issue.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you, and I would bet, I don't wanna volunteer you for things you have not volunteered for, but I bet if any of the counselors had a question, they could call you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And if you're gonna be able to stay around for...
Yes, I intend to.
Okay. I'd like for Director Beigler to come forward, and she shared with you a few weeks ago, systems that we would need to deal with to, in order to be able to stay in this building through a period of TAM that it would take to either renovate the existing building or demo and construct a new building. And so I wanted her to do a follow-up. So this is not something that you have not seen. You saw it a few weeks ago, same PowerPoint, but just a little tweaking, but want her to talk to you about that.
Good morning. A couple of weeks ago, I did come in, and I identified roughly $6 million in needed projects. That list, and I need to emphasize this very strongly, was not meant to be all-inclusive. That was just the things that we thought needed or would need attention in the very near future. The list is simply to identify the most critical items at this time. If you're gonna fix everything, so you're not gonna have any breaks, you're basically rehabbing the entire building, and that is much more long-term than we're looking at. I have tweaked a couple of the prices because they were from the FY13 report, and I've adjusted those somewhat, and I added item number three. At that time, I wasn't aware of the needed fire stop in the perimeter, but I agree that, from my experience, it's one of the fire safety things we need to take care of right away. And this list is in priority order. The pressurizing the stairwells is critical so that if, in case of a fire, people get to the stairwells, they won't be inundated with smoke, and that's a very critical issue. The fire alarm system is something that is, definitely needs to be replaced and upgraded. Be aware that in this particular project, everything ties into the central core, and we do not currently have a system there that will support the newer fire alarms with the klaxons and the lights and all of that. So we will have to replace the whole central core and then every one of our fire alarms throughout the building. That one is going to take a little bit more time because we have to, we can't do a floor at a time. The stairwells can be done separately, and the fire stops can be done pretty much a floor at a time or a couple of floors at a time. So I would agree that if we're going to move forward, we would wanna work on the fire stops on those higher floors at the same time we're doing repairs from the water damage. The other issue that we discussed is, we don't have access to a lot of the building anymore. A lot of locks have been changed, and we really need a centralized lock system, a master key system. Security needs that, and facilities need that in order to be able to get to toilets if we got, or if we're having flooding or whatever. We do need the water valves for each floor. That will be a little slower. We're still working, and we are actually working now with some of the local mechanics to try to locate where those valves need to go, and they need to be for hot water, cold water, and recirculating water. We need to go ahead, and in many cases, we know the gate valves in the toilets and the sinks need to be replaced with ball valves. The AC controls, the condition of, you know, the very, very cold or very, very hot in a lot of the offices, won't get a lot better until we do some AC controls. Sprinkler system, a little further down the list, but another fire safety issue that's important. And if I could do one system that, where we just go ahead and replace, it would be the drain lines, because they're cast iron, they're fragile, and they're starting to split, and really be a problem. What was originally $6 million with the addition of the fire stops and a few adjustments is $7.13 million. Now, if, one of the things I've been looking at is, if we're gonna accomplish this, how long will it take? And if we were going to, and this is kind of a short-term, midterm, and long-term approach, if we're going to start moving out immediately, find a building, get out, not repair the upper floors, and this is if, just, you all will be making those decisions. I would recommend we not do anything, any of those projects, and we put our focus on moving people out. If we're going to be looking at a couple of years before we can find space, get it renovated, get the courts moved, of about two or more years before we vacate, we really need to move immediately on the top four projects. That is the stairwell pressurization, fire alarms, fire stops, and the lock replacement, and that totals up, I didn't get it on there, but it totals up to $2.5 million. And we'll be dealing with repair issues as they arrive, and of course, you know, turning off the water for the whole building and draining the system to make minor repairs will continue if we don't take care of valves on the floors, et cetera. And then, of course, if we're going to go into the long term, we need to do that whole list, and we need to do it as quickly as possible to minimize repairs, because events are gonna happen, and we need to be able to deal with them as promptly as possible. So that is basically, from a maintenance perspective, what I feel needs to happen.
All right, we have Counselor House. Sorry?
Director Beigler, thank you very much. This is totally separate from the insurance money to repair.
That is correct.
Right? Okay. I just wanna make sure I was straight on that. Thank you.
Looks like that's all this time.
Okay, and so next, Mayor, I'm going to bring up Director John Hudgerson, and we have our risk manager here, also Anne Marie Emile. John is gonna talk about repairs, construction, related to flooding, and the insurance proceeds.
Morning, counsel. I guess one thing I'd like to address, kind of, before we get too far, is that, being the building official, this does also kind of come in my side of inspections and codes. And when we did go through the building, and the building was shut down in June, we did go back through the systems, and we made sure, we verified we had structural integrity. We did verify the alarm system, as it is currently set up, was still in operation. So ideally, if it would've been any time to condemn the building, it would've been at that time. It's just something that we dealt with. We felt that everything was getting back operational. Unfortunately, we did not know about the second leak, and then when that happened, that was another things to look at. But I will show you some pictures, especially about something on the fire stopping. I think a lot of that would've been prevented had we had proper fire stopping, and, like I said, that gets into the muddy water of what happened before, when the building was officially put into commission and all that kind of stuff, and we're still trying to peel back that, to kind of get to the base of that, to eventually provide you information on that. So ideally, the fire things that have been mentioned is what we call is preserving place. We wanna be able to notify you of the alarm, get you to the stairwell, and in this, at least while the fire is going, you have a smoke-free environment to then get you out of the building. So that's why we've kind of focused on the alarm and the pressurization of the stairwells.
(inaudible) now, category two storm?
So, like I said, I've been working kind of hand-to-hand with Anne Marie and other departments on kind of getting the insurance claim part where it needs to be. So we've kind of, these are the four areas that we're looking at, which is the building, the MEP, the contents, and moving the items out of the building. Right now, the building, we had another contract to come in, we had a previous contract to come in, and the insurance company did ask us to have another contractor come in to verify the construction amount of work that needed to be done. So Claim One, which is from floors 11 through 5, the projected construction cost, just construction, this is not furniture or any of that, just construction cost is $474,471.97. The total for Claim Two, which is floors 4 through 2, is $127,230.31. I have a chart at the end that'll add all this up, so you'll see it all in one big chart. The MEP is what we're mentioning now, is that's the mechanical, the electrical, all the other items that were damaged during the flood incident. So those claims still are the same, is $271,215, and for Claim Two, $34,071. Kind of here in this picture, if you kind of look to see where that little piece of drywall is, that's the concern of the fire stopping, is that flowing from floor to floor to floor, which is what happened in the flooding. The concern there is that that's prevalent all over the building, that between that curtain wall and where the concrete meets the actual structure of the building is where that gap is. So that's some of that fire stopping that they're talking about, because the water leaking to those floors is what happened. Had we had fire stopping in some of these areas, that water would not have continued to flow floor to floor to floor. Contents, so this is all the physical items, not, you know, not furniture. I mean, all furniture, not, you know, physical things attached to the building. So bookcases, computers, et cetera. These have been approved. I put those numbers added in on the claims that we have been given. And so the total for Claim One is $98,074.56, and for Claim Two, $66,575.67. Moving is kind of this next step, like we're saying, what's the next step? How do we get this going? Ideally, it's getting the contents moved out of the building of those areas that were affected. We have them highlighted by the areas that were affected via SURPRO, so those items are gonna be the ones that are being taken out of the building and put back in. So the cost for, the total for Claim One is $12,305.50, and for Claim Two, $11,825.16. So this is the kind of grand total number here. So if we're adding the building repairs, the cost for the MEP improvements and the cameras, moving, the actual value of the contents, whether they're being replaced or repaired or cleaned, and the moving of those items out and in, the total there for Claim One, which is floors 11 through 5, is $855,796.3. For Claim Two, that's same things, building repairs, MEP repairs, contents and moving. The total there is $239,702.14. Now, this is, I put an asterisk by this total for claims because it doesn't include SURPRO and some other things that we may need. We may need to ask for more, depending on once we get into the job. There may be supplements that we need to add to it. So that's why I put that asterisk there, 'cause that's not the final number, but as of right now, that's what insurance has approved for us to proceed with doing the claims on this property. So that's $1,095,498.17.
So, Madam Mayor...
No, 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 I didn't know. I've got the next steps as the next slide, but I'll...
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so the next steps is to bring the council, like I said, I can bring it as soon as the next council meeting, a proposal to proceed with that number of claim, to proceed with the contractor in mention, and to proceed with any of the subcontractors required to start the work immediately. That approval will authorize the general contractor and trades to begin work. We would have some type of pre-construction meeting, where we'd have the judges, and we'd have security and the sheriff's department, everybody on the same page, so we know how the approval to go. They do have a 120-day timeline. They do also understand the impetus of getting those courtrooms back open, so they have already insisted, and they've talked to the flooring contractor. A lot of the stuff in the courtrooms, it's not as much, and I have those exact numbers for Counselor Garrett, if he wants to hear them, but we have the numbers exactly for each courtroom, and they understand the importance of getting the courtrooms back operational. We do know the chambers are important, but we know in the meantime, if we're wanting to focus to get those, at least the 10th floor, we give us two more courtrooms and another hearing room, which I know will take a burden off the courts and security, would be a main priority, which the contractor's already been made aware of. So he already knows, as soon as he gets going, his thing is to hit 10, to at least get the courtrooms open and to be able to move from there. So they understand that part. I put spring 2019, 'cause like I said, we mentioned before, the last time I came, that I was coming in September, then we weren't sure which direction we were going, so now I'm coming in October. Like I said, I can bring the approval back.
And that's why I'm having the conversation with you that, you know, we can, you know, we can pursue either option. We can go continue to look for leased space and do all that I've talked about that I won't repeat, or, you know, we're presenting to you that, while he says 120 days, I mean, we're already mid-October. And our goal has been, and what we've shared with the judges, January or February. And so, you know, these are insurance proceeds that would take care of getting those floors to usable status. And simultaneously, Director Beigler has presented to you the initial investment we would have to make for fire safety, and I think you said two and a half?
Two and a half million.
Two and a half million. So if we want the earliest possible back-to-normal date, then, you know, we need to make a decision in either, in the next, at the next meeting, or no later than the second Tuesday in November, preferably at the next meeting. And so we just need to decide if we're gonna try and get them back by February timeframe. Otherwise, we're gonna, we're gonna work as hard as we can to identify square footage and work to see if it's suitable with the judges, the location, and the space, and then we're gonna have to get an architect to design it, or somebody to carve it up and make however many courtrooms would be acceptable with support space from their judicial assistants and clerk of Superior Court and whoever else, and figure out what a lease would look like and how much it's gonna cost on a monthly basis, and what security would be like through the sheriff's office. and what security would be like through the sheriff's office, and all of those things I've talked about. So we need to come back to you soon. And so here is what you have in terms of what it will take, what we're getting from insurance, and we can use this to go to work, get you to approve a contractor that we've already identified. They're waiting on us. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And so, and we just have to get you to say, proceed with that contractor. And then we're going to put them to work day and night, or however we need to do to get, and then we would work with Newt and Aaron and his firm to help us with the fire suppression or fire safety kinds of things, and identify someone to get in there and start to work, and with a strategy of what happens first, upper, lower, or however that works. So we're going to need to make a decision soon. So any questions of John Hutchinson?
Yeah, you got Counselor House.
Just one fast question. You mentioned that the fire stop would prevent the water from going all the way down the walls. Is that right?
Yes.
Where would it then just go, out to the floor, wherever it is?
Well, it would have pooled on the floor, it was, because, you know, water's going to find a way through regardless. And we found through, that's where we started to see all, a lot of our damages was through where the cameras were drilled floor to floor, or where this was drilled from floor to floor. You see what I'm saying? And so those things that were done, that's what the water worked its way down. And one of the biggest things we believe is from the curtain wall, because if you actually look at it, when it exposed, you can see the residue from where the water spilled down, and you can see it kind of coming down. And we feel that that's the way that it would have done. Now, if you would have fire stopping between the floors, like I said, it would have pooled on, caused possibly more damage on that existing floor, but it wouldn't have suffered, the floors wouldn't have received the damage.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we've got Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Hutchinson, I want to make sure that I'm understanding these numbers. The 1.1 million that we're looking at from the insurance would, as I understand it, would go to the replacement of what was damaged by those two claims. And then on top of that, we would need the 2.5 that Ms. Begler was talking about for the fire suppression. So we're looking at, at this point, about $3.6 million. Is that, is that right?
That's what we're looking at, and that's not funding the complete list of systems, as you know.
Right.
But, but, yeah, we're looking at the 3.5, 3.6, with a million, one coming from insurance. So city would be left with the two and a half.
And that, that 3.6 would pretty much get us back into the courtrooms, not necessarily with all the fancy stuff in there, but enough to hold court.
Well, the number for putting it back would put the judges back in their chambers, would get their grand jury courtroom on nine. All of that would be back pre-June.
Offices?
Yes.
It would put us back to where we were.
Where we were, and their offices and everything, right?
Furniture, fix, yeah, all of it.
Okay, and then, and then on top of that, we need the 2.5 for those life-saving.
Fire safety.
Immediate issues.
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. I just want to make sure I've got all of that in my brain right. Thank you.
So with all of that said, I just, I'm going to call on the finance director to go back to what Newt Aaron presented to you to talk about what the funding options would be for all that Newt Aaron talked to you about. All that Newt Aaron talked to you about is what she's going to be addressing, what the funding options are. But I still need you to remember, as you hear the rest of this, I want to make sure that we know that we must come back at the next meeting to get some direction if we're going to make the judges happy.
Angelica?
Yeah, all right. So good morning, Madam Mayor, the City Manager, and members of council. So I'm going to talk very briefly about the funding options and a proposed timeline to support these options. The first option or funding mechanism that we could utilize as a city is the Columbus Building Authority issuing Columbus Building Authority bonds. The issuance of CBA bonds do not require a referendum. That bond issuance process is about four to six months. The only thing with issuing CBA bonds is that the issuance of bonds that are CBA bonds would require an increase in the debt service mileage rate. We're estimating about, for every 50 million issued, the estimated mileage rate increase is about .52 mils. I've included here a couple of examples as to what that means. For a $100 million bond issuance, a home with a fair market value of $150 would experience a tax increase, a property tax increase of $62.40. For a $200 million bond issuance, that same home would experience a property tax increase of $124.80. And again, these are just estimates as far as the mileage rate. The actual mileage rate increase would just depend on how we structure the financing of these bonds, which we'll talk a little bit more about that later. So here is just a historical chart of the mileage rate, the debt service mileage rate, as well as the operating mileage rate from FY '12 to FY '19. You can see that the mileage rate has been fairly consistent for us, with the only difference is being really between the operating and the bond mileage rate, because there was an increase, a decrease in the bond mileage rate or the debt service mileage rate, and an increase to the operating mileage rate because of the increase in the economic development mileage rate, where we went up from .16, .19 to .25 mils, and then now it's at .50 mils. So here is the proposed timeline for the CBA bonds. There aren't any dates, but this is strictly listed on a month, a month-to-month basis. Again, that timeframe or timeline for CBA bonds is about four to six months. So within the first month, of course, we would develop the proposed budget for the project, draft any authorizing resolutions for the city, as well as the Columbus Building Authority, and begin updating our preliminary official statement, which is a statement that we have to issue with all bonds. It just talks about Columbus, talks about our financial condition and that sort of thing. A month two, we would approve any authorizing resolutions, file for bond validation, and notify the rating agencies of a planned sale. In the third month, we would hold a bond validation hearing, finalize all drafts of all financial documents. In the fourth month, we would send that information to the rating agencies and make presentations as necessary. And sometimes that requires an on-site visit, either with them or them coming to us. We would, in the fifth month, receive those ratings back from the rating agencies, as well as finalize the official statement and prepare to advertise the bond for sale. And then in that final month, we would advertise the sale, receive the bids, award the bonds, and then close and receive the monies from those, the proceeds, the bond proceeds. So the next financing mechanism that we could utilize as a city is a special purpose local option sales tax, or SPOST. What we'd need to first do is list the projects to be funded by SPOST, as well as call for imposition of the tax. That must be approved by council resolution. A SPOST requires a referendum to be passed by a simple majority, so that means more than 50% of the voters have to approve the SPOST. SPOST proceeds cannot, can only be used for capital projects. We cannot use proceeds for operating expenses or maintenance of any SPOST project or any existing accounting facility or service.
Angelica, doesn't it also have to go to the state legislature, or does it just council resolution? Usually, for a tax, it's council resolution to the legislature, they approve it. But, yeah, no, just, just council's good enough? Okay, great, great. Okay, thank you.
SPOST proceeds can be used to pay debt service on general obligation debt if the issuance of that debt is approved in conjunction with the approval of the SPOST. SPOST are typically levied for five years unless general obligation bonds or GO bonds are issued in conjunction with the SPOST. And if we issue, as a consolidated government, if we issue GO bonds in conjunction with a SPOST for us, we can collect for up to 10 years. So a SPOST for us would generate approximately $33.4 million. This is based on current collections at 1%. Our current sales tax rate is 8%, with 4% going to the state. The city's original loss at 1%, which does not expire. The city's other loss at 1%, which does not expire. The school district has an E-SPOST that expires on June 30 of 2020. And we, the city currently has a T-SPOST of 1% that expires December 31 of 2022. And again, with the SPOST, as far as the projects are concerned, you can either have pay-as-you-go projects or advance some of the projects with the bond issuance. So as far as our options, we could issue CBA bonds with interest-only payments for three to five years, and this would be supported by increasing the debt service mileage rate, which is an increase in the property tax revenue. And the reason for structuring it with an interest-only payment for three to five years would be in anticipation of a possible SPOST. So if a SPOST is approved either in 2020 or 2022, those CBA bonds could be refunded and replaced with GO bonds using SPOST proceeds for the debt service repayment. Now, if we, if a SPOST is not approved, then those CBA bonds that we've issued would be supported solely from property tax revenue for the life of the bonds. And so the next option would be to just forego the CBA bonds and wait until 2020 to issue bonds, GO bonds, as part of a SPOST. And we do that for certain projects, such as the Government Center, the new Government and Judicial Center, or a new storage facility, or whatever projects we'd like to be included in the bond issuance portion of the SPOST. We could do that, and the remaining projects would just be pay-as-you-go. So we would do, we have the option of doing that for 2020 or for 2022. And so what's listed next is just a proposed timeline for a 2020 SPOST, and this is part of the general primary elections. The first series of public meetings could start as early as February of 2019. We would run those public meetings from February to July of 2019, have a second set of meetings from August 2019 to October 2019, with the official presentation to council on July 14 of 2020. Council would approve and adopt a resolution on January 20, I'm sorry, January 14 of 2020 is the council presentation. Council would approve a resolution on January 28 of 2020. And there would be a call for election on February 11 of 2020. And the reason why the call for election is on February 11 is because the call for election must be 90 days before the election date, which is May 19 of 2020. And that is the date that the SPOST referendum would be on the ballot. And we, if approved, we could start collection as early as October 1 of 2020. And the next slide is just a timeline for also a SPOST in 2020, but, but part of the general, general election, which is in November. So the first series of public meetings could start as early as October of 2019. We would hold those through February of 2020, March 2020 through June 2020. We would have a second series of public meetings with official council presentation on July 14 of 2020. Council would adopt a resolution on July 28 of 2020, with the call for election being on August 4 of 2020. It'd be on the ballot. The SPOST referendum would be on the ballot with the November 3 election of 2020. And collections would begin as of April 1 of 2021. And the reason why it kind of stands out until April of 2021 is because we have to begin at the start of the next quarter after it's been approved, more than 80 days after it's been approved. So that's when the next quarter begins. So the timeline, I'm not going to go through it as I did the first two, but the timelines for 2022, a SPOST of 2022 is very similar to the timeline in, for the SPOST in 2020. Only real difference is being the election dates, and you really sort of have to back up from the election dates to get to the other appropriate dates as far as the approval of the council presentation, the resolution, and the call for election. So that is my presentation. Take any questions?
So just addressing the options presented by Newt Aaron, these would be the three or four funding options. And so obviously, with CBA, you could move more quickly than you could waiting on the 2020 or 2022 SPOST. And, but if you do CBA as was presented, and decide if we do a SPOST, we want to be able to go back and pay off that expense with GO bonds, then you could do that, as you explained.
That's correct.
And so do CBA and then do SPOST without GO or with GO, and, but.
Well, we would, we would do a SPOST with the GO bond.
Yeah, I think so. I'm just saying, these are all options.
Right.
And, and then the question, if you decided a SPOST, would you want it in a May election or a general election? And I will say to you that in 2022, the May election would be a mayoral election in 20, in May of 2022. And of course, then the general election is November. So the question would be, you know, which option of a funding source is, would be your preference if you decide you want to do any at all? And so Angelica, Director Alexander is here to answer questions regarding the options that she's presented.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Councilmember Huff?
Thank you. I appreciate the information. Quick question on the series of public meetings. How many would there be? When and how many, based on that timeframe?
Well.
I mean, if we were, if we're looking at 2022 timeframe and trying to get things done.
Yeah, let me tell you what we've done in the past, and maybe Counselor Thomas can help with this, because she was obviously involved, and she did most, most of them the last time. I mean, we've done as many as 10 to say, you know, to hear from the citizens about what you want on this list. And then when we, when we try and capture all of what we've heard in 10, we've gone back out with as many as 10 more to say, here's what we think we heard from you, and we want to make sure we got it right. And then when they confirm, yeah, that's the list, that's, you got it right, that's when we would then come back to council and say that we've edited this. We've gone out with 20 meetings, 10 to listen and, and complete the list, and 10 to verify. And so you can have a list of projects on the A list and a project, list of projects on the B list that would not be included, but not forgotten. And we call it putting them in the parking lot. So as many, as many as you want.
Okay. Next question. These will be citywide? Next question, these will be citywide or the district meetings, or just each one will be a citywide type public meeting?
Well, Counselor Thomas, you know, I, Counselor Woodson can tell how it was done before.
Okay, just before I turn her microphone, Councilmember Huff, we're not going to skip you, we're just going to give her an opportunity to speak, okay? Thank you.
When we did the OLOS in 2008, the first round, we did one meeting in each council district. So that was eight meetings. And then we went back and refined and so forth. And then we came back with three general meetings in various parts of the, of the city. As the city manager said, we took out first in those eight meetings what we were proposing and had feedback from constituents, went back and refined and changed and so forth, and then took the, the, what was going to be on the ballot back with three meetings around, around the city. So that's how we did it in, for the OLOS.
Thank you very much. Seth?
Yeah, thank you for the information. I just want to make sure, we got a couple of text messages, wanted to know how much the public would be involved.
Yeah.
As long as we get them involved, we'll be fine, have them on our team. Thank you.
And, and let me just say regarding that, you know, I've had staff working on a list of projects for probably close to a year. I think, I don't know if it was Counselor Davis or someone back way, whenever, asked if we were working on a list. And we have been, and we have that. And I actually have a presentation that I'm ready to show you, and it's, it would be, and we might not do it today, but, but it would be what we've heard from departments, you know, and unedited. And it's a, it's a wish list. And it would be something that we would share with you and, and at the appropriate time, if you decide you want to pursue a SPOSS, then we would share with the public what, what we're hearing from departments. And then let the public say what they want and don't want on the list and, and then try and find, refine it or fine tune it to come back. So it would be, obviously, your constituents, the citizens would get to decide what's on that list.
All right, we've got Counselor House.
Thank you very much. So if we go with the CBA bonds with the idea of then going with GO bonds and a SPOSS, the mileage rate's going to go up with the CBA bonds? Assuming the SPOSS is approved, does the mileage rate go back down then at that point?
It does.
Okay, so then, so basically the sales tax would replace the property tax in bringing in the revenue to build whatever we're going to build.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, and Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, this fund, these funding options that Ms. Alexandria just presented to us would be for the, when we decide on what Mr. Aaron called option one and two.
That's right.
For the, for the building. What about the $2.5 million that we are looking for, for immediate?
Yeah, that's.
To supplement the insurance piece.
Yeah. Of course, the, the 2.5 million would come from a source to be determined, but that lady right there is going to tell us how that's going to get.
Well, it just seems to me that we need to know that source as quickly as possible if we're going to do it within the next four months.
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we're going to do it, we're going to be coming back to you in the next two to four weeks.
Right.
Yeah, you said months.
My understanding about Counselor Thomas's question is you would have to find the cash to do such a thing, right? So where, fund balance, right? But you could, if you issued the CBA bonds, replenish yourself with that, is my understanding. And I don't know, Angelica, if that's correct. I, I don't know if you were in that meeting, but if it's like 90 days or something and you issue the bonds, you can replenish your out-of-pocket. Did, is that correct? Or am I stating that incorrectly?
There is a 90-day look-back period as far as that's concerned. But I don't necessarily know if, what we're trying to do would, if it would fit into that 90-day window. And I mean, because that, that 90-day window is once the bonds are actually issued. So we could be out as far as the dates are concerned. But my recommendation would be.
For the 2, for the 2.5 million?
For 2.5.
Yeah.
Would be fund balance. That would be about six days of fund balance. We are finalizing the audit.
She said fund balance.
Fund balance. We are, it'd be about six days of fund balance. And what we could use is the OLOS infrastructure fund balance that we have. But again, that's about six days when you're talking about fund balance.
Where would that leave us if you did that?
We are finalizing the audit for FY '18. So it could possibly take us below 60 days. It may not. I'm still working on the audit with the auditors and finalizing all the figures as far as how much is in fund balance. Right now, it may not take us below 60 days.
She'll, she'll figure out how to do it and not take us below 60.
Right.
Is, is what we're doing.
Well, one of the, one of the things that, that came to my mind, again, is the, the OLOS infrastructure. And it may be that there are projects on that, on that infrastructure program at this time that could be put on hold until we can get some of this done. The OLOS infrastructure fund seems to me to be one of the primary sources for this $2.5 million. I hesitate to go into the general fund, fund balance. Counselor Baker has taught me over the years, don't be messing with that stuff. But the, the infrastructure, OLOS infrastructure perhaps could be. And it may be that we just have to postpone some of the things that are currently on the, on that plate.
Yeah.
Until we can get this done. This, this seems to me to take precedent over some of the other kinds of things that we are, have on that list for the infrastructure money.
Well, that's why I say she'll figure out, and we'll figure out how to do it, and maybe use a combination of some fund balance and some infrastructure that we will remain at or above 60 days.
And I would also hope that not only with the, if we look, if we look to an SPOSS, that we go out to the community, but if we look to issue bonds, we need to get into the community and talk to the folks and, and so forth. And I'm not sure that that can be done in the next 90 days. Whereas some of the other kinds of things that we've been talking about, I think, can be done fairly quickly so we can get, get this back on, on track.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have Counselor Davis.
Well, I don't, I don't know about delaying projects. We've got, we've already had some presentations on some other infrastructure needs in this city that are, should be priority as well. You can add, right, you can add to the OLOS. You can add debt to the OLOS, right? You can borrow more money.
We could issue bonds.
That's what we're doing anyway, right?
Well, we have bonds.
What I'd like to do for the next meeting is bring back to you options with recommendations of how to do the 2.5 at the next meeting. And, and, and so, you know, I'd like, I'd like to see. I'm just, I'm thinking about how we get back in as quickly as possible.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, let me, can, I'm not sure how the state views the school district and the city. I'm, I'm assuming they view us both as municipalities under one roof. So in saying that, my question would be, is there any reason why you couldn't split a percentage, whether it's, you wouldn't call it an E-SPOSS, I guess, you'd just call it SPOSS, but could you do, essentially do that with approval at the state level?
I, I think you can. Counties and cities do, they split a penny off the town. I mean, everywhere else outside of consolidated governments, they're, you know, they're fighting over a portion of a penny rather than agreeing over the portion of the penny. And I, I think that, you know, we, we've explored that before years ago, and so I think it can be done.
So if you came up with a plan, and then you figured out exactly how much you needed, you could go to our neighbors and work out a memorandum of understanding on agreement to, to try to deal with some of this and still accomplish the needs of both entities, probably the least burden to the citizens upon their decision if they think it's, it's adequate. Or even add to the other needs within the community, infrastructure needs within the community, parks and recs, all the other things that are sitting out there that need update, updated. There's a possibility there. You, you're talking about a lot of money that a penny brings in. And then you've got, you know, you've got some other revenue that's coming into the city in the near, in the near future that, you know, could counter maybe some of the burden that the citizens would occur here, would actually make it, in my opinion, more advantageous, advantageous. You could build a pretty good case in reducing property taxes at the same time solving some of these problems within your community.
I mean, you know, sharing a 1% is an option that is worth, I think, discussing.
We've always talked about having a good relationship. I mean, we're, 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 you know, I guess everybody can see, there's a, there's a cry right now of a, of a, of a need within our city with limited options, so.
Sure. So, so, I mean, certainly that's something worth adding to the discussion if, in pursuing a 1%. But in terms of the 2.5, Counselor Thomas and Counselor Davis, we can certainly bring back where that would come from and how, at the next meeting. And what I'd like to bring back at the next meeting is, would be the, the two options. And then you could select which option you'd like for us to pursue.
Right.
So option one would be that, and we'll share with you where the 2.5 would come from to start the fire safety work, and the million to get the courtrooms in order, and trying, and we've got a contractor that if you agree with that, that we would ask you to approve, and then that work would start immediately. That's one option. And the other option, the second option at the next meeting would be that we continue to pursue leased space, try and tie down some lease agreements, try and determine if we get to view the building, what the cost would be to renovate, alter those buildings to make them suitable for courtroom and staff space. And then what, if any additional costs, the sheriff's office would look for in terms of security. And then you can tell us which option you'd like. And so we either go to work immediately the day after, or we continue to pursue and try and alter some other space.
Well, and those, I think I stated that I had some questions earlier that I'd like to discuss.
Sure.
I think within some of these proposals, there's going to be some questions of, of necessity at that point in time versus on which direction you go. You know, you're only talking about if, based on if this is an accurate timeline. In subject, in, in reference to the, or in respect to the subject timeline that's being somewhat presented, that could, you know, potentially, potentially go out further. But you're only talking 18 months. And in looking at some of this conversation, you may not even need to have all that money at that point in time. Like you, you know, it, it gives us time to make, work through some of these decisions, if you understand what I'm saying.
Well, in the option one that I just presented, I don't understand what you're saying because
And I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about go ahead and, and getting the work done and getting these judges back in the courtrooms. I'm not talking about that.
Okay, okay, I got you. Yeah, then I, yeah, I got you.
No.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about that, no. I'm just talking about in so, in, in these timelines that have been presented.
Yeah, I got you.
You look at them, you're only dealing 18 months.
Right.
18 months.
Right.
You might be at the point of doing bids at that, that time, so.
Yeah.
You know, but I don't know, but you wouldn't need that money until that point.
Yeah, I was, I get, I got that. But I was just focused on getting, if we don't move, they are not going to be back in those courtrooms in February.
Understand. Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
All right, it looks like that's it for now on this subject.
Okay.
Uh, nope. Okay, go ahead.
I was just going to say with that, I'm going to conclude.
All right, I think we have, as soon as you finish on this issue, we have somebody who wants to talk about another issue, I believe.
Okay, then I'm going to let that conclude the Government Center discussion. See, the judge is gone, but I just, I, I want to make sure that we are on the same page in terms of moving forward. But I'll talk, we'll talk later with him.
I bet you he'll find you.
Pardon?
I bet you he'll find you before the day's out.
All right, well, that concludes the discussion, Madam Mayor, on the Government Center update.
Well, thank you. It's a very obviously complex issue, and appreciate council's attention and all of you all that have worked so hard. And thank you, those of you who have come, the judges and local lawyers, to help us just understand how serious this is and the need to push. And I know you are, and thank you. But, but we got to move on this.
Yeah, and let me just finally thank Newt Aaron, Ryan Clemmons, 2WR, would you stand? And Hic Burdeshaw, where, they've got, okay. So it's been these local people, organizations who have come together in a public-private kind of effort to get us to where we, moving in the right direction and, and get the judges back in space and employees and citizens doing business down at City Hall. So I wanted to recognize all of them and thank them, and then thank the staff for all of their work. And thanks again for that recommendation. I've not had the opportunity to work with Newt and Ryan, but it's been a pleasure. So thank you.
All right, thank you. And we have Counselor Woodson.
City Manager, I have an appointment, but I, I wanted to interrupt your agenda to ask you to please look into this matter. I asked Ms. Taisha to put a picture up for you, a couple pictures. I have some concerns that I think that we need to reevaluate and address. I know that technology is very important in today's society, but we also need to be very careful in how we establish technology. This pole right here that I'm showing to you was placed in an area in Oakland Park on Hawthorne, a community that's trying to lift its spirits, change their perception, and beautify their community. This pole was kind of forced into the community by being said that it's the state, that's the regulations, and so on and so on. Well, okay, we lost that battle, no problem. We said okay with the pole. Now, what concerns me and upsets me highly with this is that, look where all the generator and all the electrical and everything that needs to be related to that pole is at a child's level or someone that wants to vandalize the community or, or do something. level, or someone that wants to vandalize the community or do something. That is so unsafe. It isn't even protected. And then on top of it, this person that has it in front of their home, I mean, you sit on the porch and this is what you look at, has weeds coming out of it, they even put an additional, like, I guess, power on the ground, and we ask our constituents to help us in maintaining our right of ways and stuff. I think it's very unfair, and it's very inappropriate. I think that this company needs to take that out and put it up higher or remove it. I understand it's for the purpose of cell phones, but let me tell you, well, years ago, we didn't have cell phones, and I don't think it's fair, and I want to show you the next And in my understanding, that there are several of these in different communities.
Yeah, and they'll say...
This is what I want to, I know, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of like, eh, antsy about this. I want to show you where this person sits and looks at, and, and I think that the people that want to put these cellphone towers, or whatever you want to call it, there's the hole, see the platform on the hole down the ground there, that was not there before, but it is there now, is that little silver portion of it, which distracted a beautiful lawn. Go to the next picture, please, because it's three pictures? Oh, I thought I sent you one of the house. Okay. Well, there's another one where you sit on this, on this poor individual's porch, and all you look at is this. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, mainly for safety reasons.
Well, let me just say this, you know, I've heard from Counselor Allen, I think, Counselor Thomas, Counselor House.
Oh, I didn't know.
Early in the morning, early in the morning.
Okay.
And, and let me tell you, and the city attorney has been involved, the assistant city attorney, you know, this was legislation that we fought against over the last few years, and you heard Tom Gill from GMA mention it this morning. And last legislative session, we spoke and fought this piece, this legislation, and I think it's shameful, and, and I say that because I want, I want the cellphone providers to hear me say, it's shameful what they're doing to communities, and not just in Columbus, but all over the state. You know, we need cell towers and all of that, but what they're doing a rights way in neighborhoods, nice neighborhoods where there's underground utility, and they come and they dump something like this on us, shame on them. And I think we need to continue to fight it, you heard from GMA, but it is shameful that they are doing that. The cellphone providers are doing that to our neighborhoods. Shameful.
And I appreciate you saying that, because I was very livid when I, when I saw this. And the thing, the most important thing of it is, where's the safety? I mean, I could have, and I was writing, I got the phone call, and I didn't call her right back, I just decided to go, I got on my bike and rode by it, and I about died when I saw that, because I can get off my bike, go grab those wires, and pull them, at my height, and I'm only 5'7", you know? I mean, anybody can come in there and damage these and cause additional issues and problems. So while we're fighting that fight, we need to, maybe the city attorney, see who's going to be liable and responsible if something should happen where somebody plays, destroys that, why would that, you know, homeowner have to be responsible to keep it neatly for someone else that didn't even consider their feelings, because at the time we argued, we discussed it, excuse me, we discussed it, I even said, well, can we push it down a little bit so the person doesn't have to sit in front of their porch and look at it? And my response was, no, it has to be right there, it won't fit, it's just a pole, it'll be just fine. Well, that ain't just a pole. That is not just a pole, and something needs to be done. It needs to be covered, or it needs to be removed up, or who's going to be responsible? I don't want us to be responsible if a lawsuit comes because somebody got hurt or somebody's property got damaged.
Well, and I was going to present something today, but I knew this meeting would be long, and so I wanted to wait until the next meeting.
Okay.
To talk further about it.
Well, that's great, because, you know, I'll go visit that family, and I will personally tell them and tell them to look at, if they're not watching, they might be watching now. I didn't ring the doorbell or anything, because I didn't want to get into, and I didn't have any answers for them at the time, so I thought, hey, pictures speak louder than words. And I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have Counselor Davis.
Ms. City Manager, back to the discussion about the government center. I didn't bring it up at the time, and it was stated during the presentation, which I think needs to go ahead, it's, it's part of the planning part, but it was stated, and I think it's relevant, extremely relevant, it was stated that there needs to be a study on the, on the structural aspect of the government center. We don't have that, I think that, I think everybody agree that, that that needs to be done, because that in itself may help in the, well, it will help in the decision-making process. So, you know, I would be all in favor of doing that as soon as possible. If we need to approve funding for it, I think that that's, it's a necessity here, it's all a part of trying to figure out what's the right option.
Well, you know, certainly the engineering director is sitting out there and other staff, so let us look at the cost and, and at least talk about that at the next meeting as well.
Well, you know, it's a cost, but I don't see how you can move forward unless you have that information in hand. Thank you.
All right. I think that concludes this discussion, then. Good discussion. Thank you all for your interest and your patience, and as the city manager said, all of you all who have put in so much work and volunteered your time, we're so appreciative of your professionalism, your civic duty. Ms. ... Okay, hold on, I thought you were on. There you go.
Thanks. Counselor Woodson wanted me to mention that Item 5 on the legislative agenda that was requested by Counselor Davis asks the state legislature for some help on these small cellphone towers as well, to try to get some local regulation returned to local elected officials. Before there's any placement of towers, we'd like neighborhood feedback and at least some notification to these areas, and Counselor Woodson wanted me to say that in case her constituent was still listening, but we do have that as Number 5 on the legislative agenda list.
All right. Thank you. All right, we are now moving into public agenda. Let me say at the outset, we greatly appreciate your patience. We know that Ms. Gallagher was one of the ones that said that she would reschedule because of the length of the meeting, and so we will get her back in next time. Is Ms. Bernita Haynes here, representing Georgia Watch and Energy Efficient for All? Ms. Haynes? Okay. Excuse me? Yes. Well, we can get her back. Is it, is it time-sensitive? Oh, yeah, go ahead. Can you hit your button?
Go to somebody else, because I got my application first.
Okay, all right, sure, sure. Okay, how about Ms. Imani Alcontra? Ms. Imani Alcontra is here to talk about Truly Living Well: Growing Families in Columbus. Hello. We're so glad to have you, and what we'll do is, we'll set five minutes for you to make your presentation, and then if you still need some more, I'll add another five minutes, and so if you would, just introduce yourself and state the address of yourself or the organization, either one.
Okay. My name is Imani Alcontra. My name is Imani Alcontra, and the Truly Living Well: Growing Families program for Columbus will be held at Van Community Center, and I don't have that address memorized, I think it's 5501 12th Avenue, and basically, Truly Living Well, in partnership with Kellogg's Foundation, has graciously provided seed money for 20 single mothers to participate in a program which teaches them, trains them, provides them with skills, as well as education on how to grow food and create an agribusiness. This program begins next week. We have quite a few mothers that have signed up for the program, however, we do, we are still accepting applications, and we still have openings for mothers, and so I wanted to let the community know, as well as the council members, know about this program and this opportunity for single mothers and their children. Let's see, let's see, let's see. We believe that healthy food is essential for everyone, and that if you impact mothers, you have a great impact upon families, and that strong families build strong communities. I myself participated in the program, as my husband, who's a veteran and was a former employee with the city of Columbus, passed away about a year and a half ago, and he was the sole provider of our family, which is a family of eight, so myself, my husband, and we have six children, and so when he transitioned, we began living below the poverty line. So I had to figure out, what am I going to do? And a friend suggested the Growing Families program, and Growing Families, Truly Living Well's Growing Family, Growing, Growing Families program, and they suggested that I bring some other mothers and their children, and so four mothers, including myself, and 10 other children, participated in this program. We completed our projects, and we graduated, and I was blessed to be tapped to create the, start the program here in Columbus, as they've only offered that program in Atlanta. So, we're beginning this program, and we just are looking forward to expanding, we're looking for partners as we expand, because we're in, we're at Bellwood, however, we're looking at the land in that community to grow the garden, because we would love to have a, eventually a farmer's market, where the mothers and their children are growing food and making, hopefully creating value-added products to offer to, within their community.
Wow, what a blessing that you, that had a moment of need in your life, have transitioned that now to an opportunity where you're helping so many others.
Absolutely.
So, thank you so very much for this. Will you state the, the date and the time again, and the place of the, when you first came?
And also, just to let everyone know, the, I'm going to pass out, they're not posters, but information, cards about the program for each one of you. On CCG TV, the card is also, they can see the information there as well.
Okay.
If they have additional questions or information, and it, there's telephone number, as well as website, as well as all that additional information. But it begins online, because there's an online portion, where they're learning about growing food and gardening, I should say, and that begins Friday night, but for five consecutive weeks, we will be in the garden at Bellwood.
At Bellwood.
Beginning, beginning October the 20th, and then the graduation will take place December 1st.
Wonderful. Well, we will get that information up and on to CCG. So, thank you so much, and do leave that information. You can put it right there in the corner, and Tia will come get it, we'll make sure we get it up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Ms. Betty Lindsey, who's with the Exchange Club of Columbus, Georgia. Thank you again for your patience as well, and if you'd just state your name and your address, please, and then you can start your comments.
Good afternoon. Thank you to the council, the mayor, and the city manager for having me here today. I represent the Exchange Club of Columbus. We are a nonprofit organization, and we work under the, we're governed, excuse me, we're governed by the National Exchange Club out of Salido, Ohio. We have service projects that are dictated by them, they are programs of Americanism, service to youth, community service, and childhood abuse prevention. Under the Americanism, we do the One Nation Under God program in November, we do young citizenship in Muskogee County middle school students, and we do a program with Veterans Matter. The service to youth projects include the Youth of the Month and the Youth of the Year in Muskogee County School District High Schools, ACE, which stands for Accepting the Challenge of Excellence, which is a project for high school seniors who have overcome physical, mental, or personal situations, have been able to graduate from high school. We do Partners in Education with Rothschild Leadership Academy, and an ongoing process through the school year. Our community service projects include service to seniors, a Sun Town special with the youth, and the House of Time. Childhood abuse prevention projects include the Children's Treehouse, and as of June 2018, the Children's Treehouse was approved as an affiliate of the National Exchange Club, something we're very proud of. We do Damascus Way and Katie's Closet, several more that are approaches and are, as approved by our board of directors, and our Timeout Teddy is always available to promote childhood abuse prevention by promoting timeout. To fund the above-mentioned projects, we depend solely on our fundraising projects. The major one will be the Footlong Hot Dog Jamboree, which will be held October 18th to the 20th. We will be working in a new location this year, and pleased that Winbrook Baptist Church at 500 River No Way opened their doors to us for this project. We will be serving hot dogs from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM each day, and on Saturday, we will be having an antique car show, and also we'll have a bluegrass van to entertain the customers. We have a phone number, 706-341-1947, and a fax number, 706-660-1980, and we can take call-in orders and fax orders. I thank you so much for having us here today to address the council, to be able to get the word out about our Footlong Hot Dog Jamboree. Thank you.
Wonderful. It is, first of all, you all do such great work for the community, thank you for all you do. And secondly, if you all out there haven't been to get a Footlong Hot Dog, you need to go, because they're fantastic, and so, thank you so much for coming and sharing that with us. Again, we're sorry that you had to wait so long to get your message out, but hopefully you found it relatively interesting, because it affects...
Well, actually, it was very educational being here today, learning about the government center.
That's right. Well, thank you.
And I thank, I thank you, and I look forward to seeing all of you October 18th through the 20th.
You will see us there. Thank you so much.
Have a great day.
Bye-bye. All right. And next, we have Ms. Audrey Holstein-Palomar, who wants to talk about a meeting request. So, Ms. Palomar, we'll get you up, and if you would, just state your name and address, please. What's that? Yay. Okay, yeah, I think after this...
Good afternoon. According to my cellphone, the time is 12:29. Good afternoon. According to my cell phone, the time is 12:29. Good afternoon, selected officials, elected officials, and citizens of Columbus, Georgia. I am a citizen of Columbus, Georgia. My name is Mrs. Audrey Holsten-Palmore. I reside in a single-family dwelling located at 1035 Lawyer's Lane, located in Columbus, Georgia. My zip code is 31906. On Friday, October the 5th, 2018, during the 11:00 AM hour, I reported to the Office of the Clerk of Council for the Columbus Consolidated Government of Columbus, Georgia. As required by law, I submitted to a clerk for the Office of the Clerk of Council an application to spend, to speak on the public agenda for today. I was provided a copy of the application, and I left the office satisfied that I had performed a duty to move forward in my desire to address the city council officials about meetings I have a need to be involved with, with Public Safety Director of the City of Columbus, Georgia. Her name is Teresa Tomlinson. I am also present to request a meeting with the city manager, Isaiah Hugley. At approximately two-ish o'clock in the, on the same date of Friday, October the 5th, 2018, I answered a cell call, a call on my cell phone from the clerk whom accepted the application I submitted earlier. The female voice identified the caller being the clerk I had communication with earlier in the day. I acknowledged her call and told the clerk I would be there in person to receive the message. I was unable to write nor speak at length about the incoming call. I returned back to the clerk, council of clerks' office located at the Government Center to personally receive the message the clerk could not provide during the approximately 2:00 PM call due to the lack of bad timing of my reception and outreach on the part of the clerk of council. Because of time restraints, I had to leave the city and was not able to respond to the message. It was a message from the Public Safety Director, Teresa Tomlinson. I didn't respond to the clerk other than to thank her for doing her job and calling, seeking to communicate with me. I have asked that I be notified by the Public Safety Director, I have asked that the Public Safety Director contact me via U.S. Postal Service. I am hoping to receive a letter directly from the Public Safety Director about the meeting I requested to have with her and the composer of a police report about me that I need to bring some clarity into my understanding of the report. I ask that there not be a court proceeding necessary for us to move forward, just a meeting whereas I, as a citizen, where I'm requesting that the composer of this police report in which the Public Safety Director oversees the Department of Law Enforcement, according to my understanding. Thank you. At this time, I would like for the city council to, members to look at the paperwork that was just given to you. It has my address, my name, my address, and the city zip code, to which I'm asking that by next council meeting in November, the second Tuesday in November, that you all take out the time to pin to me your thoughts, any thought that you may have. Or if you don't have a thought, just write, I don't have a thought about, you're coming this for the 10th time, to ask for some consideration from the Public Safety Director to at least meet with me so that we can come to some type of clarity or resolution as to the event that happened with what I thought was a law enforcement officer. Now, at this time, during my three minutes and 42 seconds, I'd like to address the fact that I have also asked, and I've also asked for a meeting with city manager Isaiah Hugley. And this has been going on since March of this year, 2018. And it's a situation that involves a family members from very, very young age who will no doubt be told about his first birthday and what happened, and the part that the Columbus Parks and Rec played in causing some negative reactions with people who were invited. So I'm here as a representative to try to understand, to try to explain to the family my position on what actually happened. And I'm asking Mr. Hugley to stop telling his clerk that he's not going to meet with me. I will continue to bring it before council because it is a very important issue. It's a very affective issue. I don't know how to talk about all of the financial things that you all have involved as far as the city Government Center. But I do know how to speak about affective events that have, that can take a long time to overcome if they're not attended to. It's like a sore, you know? And we don't, we don't want you to think that you are ignoring us because we are citizens and we have a right to present to the Public Safety Director who's concerned about the safety of Columbus, or should be, but, and the public safety, I mean, and the city manager. I want to meet with you on a one-to-one personally about a letter that you sent to my daughter. And so, one other thing is that on May the 14th, I signed up to do some picketing down at the Public Safety Director's office. And I asked that the correct dimensions of where I could picket be presented to me because I don't want to be in violation of being in the correct place to do picketing. Well, as a result of the national spirit of picketing and writing letters, I'm going to give myself at least two weeks to picket in the diameter that the Public Safety Director people diagram for me. The last two weeks of this month, I will talk to them and ask them to please diagram where I can come to picket. And I want the citizenry of Columbus, Georgia to write letters if necessary, because if they haven't responded in 10 months, there's a possibility they don't plan to respond. But if I can get some letters from the citizenry in front of the Public Safety Direct, building where I will be applying to do picketing, only if they outline the correct dimensions where I can be picketing. So I appreciate this. I want to follow the facts to the truth. This is from a Florida legislature that said, let's follow the facts to the truth. Let's sit down and just talk about what I've been concerned about. Thank you for your attention. If I didn't say enough, or if I said too much, it wasn't, I meant to say what was needed to be said by me. Thank you for your attention.
All right. And we're going to go back to Councilor Garrett. If you hit your button there, you had to announce what you wanted to make. Yeah. Okay. Well, if you do, then I may. Ms. Palmore, and you know, because we go through it, the same response every single time. You've already responded to her, involved her daughter, you met with her daughter, her daughter was fine with it.
Oh, you know-
She wants to continue to meet with you. You told her that it's a situation involving her daughter. And so here we go. And it's the same thing with me. We've called, tried to make appointments and so forth, and she continues to come back. But, but Ms. Palmore, you did invoke the clerk. Everyone on the public agenda was contacted to apprise them that it would be at least two hours before we got to the public agenda.
See, I don't care if it's five hours.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. So what we were trying to do is to allow people the opportunity to govern their day. If they had something they needed to get to, make it come a little later, so forth, so on. So that, just to clear it up, the clerk was just being polite, frankly. All right. Mr. City Manager, you said you wanted to address some things.
Well, Madam Mayor, and Ms. Palmore, thank you. And I don't want to get into a back-and-forth. You've had your 10 minutes, and I just wanted to respond, okay? So, I mean, you're welcome to have your seat.
I'm writing notes.
Okay. Mayor, you basically said it. Her daughter, who's an adult, rented Carver Park for her child's birthday party. And somehow, there was a mix-up. Parks and Rec tells me they told them the outdoor restroom is not available. Somehow, they thought it was available. It wasn't. Ms. Palmore's daughter came to see me as she escorted her daughter to see me. And because of the confusion, I had Parks and Rec to reimburse her the money for use of the park. I wrote her a letter of apology for the mix-up. And I also gifted her daughter anytime within the next year she could use any Parks and Rec facility of her choice at no cost. And that's the letter I wrote, providing that to her daughter, in addition to reimbursing her daughter. And so, the matter has been resolved. I've not heard back from her daughter. There are no issues. But Ms. Palmore wants to continue to come. And I guess, I don't know what she wants to talk about, but I've told her, we did not rent a facility to her. We rented it to her daughter. And if her daughter wants to talk to me, I will be happy to meet with her daughter. But on any other city-related matter, if she wants to talk to me about something other than the matter that we have at hand or had with her daughter, I will meet with her. If she wants to talk about another city park or concern of the city, I'm happy to meet with Ms. Palmore. But I will not meet with her about a matter that doesn't relate to her, that has to do with her daughter. If her daughter wants to meet, I'll meet. And so that's where it's at. I just want you to know.
Great. And thank you very much for that explanation. All right, we have, Councilor Garrett wanted to make an announcement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And from what I understand, Ms. Hayes actually had to go to a radio announcement before she made on the public agenda. But what she was announcing this weekend, on Saturday, October 13th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Columbus Public Library, Georgia Watch is having a free public forum. You need to RSVP online because they are providing free food. And what it is, it's an energy equity forum to talk to you about how you can manage your bills better, reducing energy, energy use, or making it more efficient. And it's an organization that basically looks out for consumers, and I'm on their board. So it's a, I think it's a worthwhile thing to attend. If you want to go, though, you need to go to www dot Georgia spelled out, watch.org. And there's a calendar there, and you can click on that and RSVP, and they will have food. And it's from 10 to 3 at the Columbus Public Library this weekend, Saturday.
We also have Pops Barnes would like to make an announcement. Hit that mic, Council Barnes. There you go. There you go.
Yes. Dr. Amanda Reese had to leave. She wanted, she got, she wanted to be on the public agenda. She is a history professor, history and geography professor at CSU. And she and the students are doing a history of the Carver Heights area. And they're going to be having on October the 20th, from 11:00 to 2:00 PM, at the Mildred Cherry Library. They say, come out and share your stories and photos of the Carver Heights area with the CSU students, and celebrate and preserve the history of this post-World War II community. They're doing a living history, and they want to have as many individuals who have a history of Carver Heights to come out and speak about their friends, many of the unsung heroes in that area they want to compile a history of. And the contact for Dr. Amanda Reese is 706-507-8358. And you can also reach her at email, R E E S Reese underscore Amanda at ColumbusState.edu. That's Reese underscore Amanda at ColumbusState.edu. And while I have the mic, I want to let everyone know the Veterans Day Parade is the second Saturday in November, the 10th. And I invite everyone, as always, to come out and to say thank you to the many women and men who wear the uniform of our armed forces and protect the precious freedoms that we have. The Veterans Day Parade gets bigger and bigger every year. This is the ninth Veterans Day Parade. And just come out and just say thank you to the, to the vets. Enjoy the marching bands, the military vehicles, the clowns, and the festivities. But the most important thing is to thank the women and men who wear the uniform, both present and past, to say thank you for the, for the privilege that we have of living in this marvelous country of ours. Because without a strong defense, we will be privy to another country really taking over. 9/11 was, should have been a wake-up call to every citizen in the United States that our freedoms are not free. They come at a cost. And so that's the Veterans Day Parade, second Saturday in November, November 10th, and it starts at 10:00 AM. You can get, if you want to be in the parade, contact Phoenix City Parks and Recs, Columbus Parks and Recs, or go online and to get your application. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Barnes. And at this time, then, we'll move into the city manager's agenda. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And as we, I know that a couple of council members stepped away. And while we are waiting, because we've got some items to be voted on, I'm going to ask Director Pat Beigler and I had Riley Land here from Emergency Management, just to talk about the weather, to provide a update on preparation and anticipated weather. And I see that Riley Land must have stepped away. But would you talk about Director Beigler's preparation?
Public Works has a fairly strict program we follow when we're anticipating weather. We do track the weather. But what we do is, first, we need to, we make sure that all the vehicles in the city are fully fueled. Then we refill the fuel tanks to make sure that we have the maximum capacity for fuel. The staff will pull out all of the equipment they need to respond, to include chainsaws, et cetera. And we'll make sure that they're in proper working order and properly fueled, and sharpened, and do whatever else they need. Then, as we approach the event, and we keep a close eye on the weather, we will put our, have our staffs, both in rainwater and forestry, go to 12-on, 12-off, so that the ones we know are going to come in in the middle of the night can go home, catch a nap- know are going to come in in the middle of the night can go home, catch a nap, take, make sure their family and their houses are secure. And we switch to 12-hour shifts until the event is passed. We also are working, and have now for the last couple of storms, been able to put all of the calls we receive out on GIS and available in the Emergency Ops Center and to those who need to see it, so that if we start having major road blockages or other issues, we can make that information available to everybody at the same time and as quickly as possible. That allows the Fire Public Safety to reroute if they need to around blocked areas. And we have priorities based on, obviously, the severity of the situations we're dealing with. So, that's all already started. The crews are working on making sure all the equipment's operational. We have contacted Public Safety to ensure that they also get all of their vehicles fired up. And if they need any immediate maintenance, they can get their equipment into the shop, and we can get it taken care of.
All right. Thanks, Pat. And Counselor, excuse me, Mr. City Manager, yes, Riley Land had to step out because he has a 1:00 p.m. statewide conference call with the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. But as of this time, prior to that 1:00 p.m. call, the last projections we had is that whatever Michael is, when it comes ashore, will probably result in about 30 miles per hour sustained winds in Columbus, with gusts up to 35 miles an hour and one to two, or excuse me, two to three inches of rain. So, that's what we're expecting right now. But of course, it changes every couple of hours. Excuse me. I don't have a wind right now. But I've heard everything from wee hours of Wednesday to early morning Thursday. So, hopefully, we'll get some more clarity on that here after the 1:00 p.m.
Yeah. And we can, Madam Mayor, have Emergency Management Director Riley Land to capture the essence of it in an email and forward it out to the members of council.
And we can get it on Facebook, too, and share it on the 311 page and so forth.
And also, Deputy City Manager Goodwin is showing me that the American Rec Cross, our Parks and Rec Director spoke to them, and they are going to open Shirley Winston Recreation Center tomorrow morning at 11:00 a.m. as a 24-hour emergency center, not an emergency shelter, as we will not have cots available. People will be instructed to bring their own blankets and pillows. And so, tomorrow morning, that's Wednesday, at 11:00 a.m., a 24-hour emergency center, not an emergency shelter, as we will not have cots available. People will be instructed to bring their own blankets and pillows, et cetera. And so, that is what we know right now.
All right. Thank you. We have Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Beigler, one of the questions that I have been asked is about garbage pickup tomorrow. Will we have regular, as far as you know, at this time?
Yes. At this time, we will have regular pickup tomorrow to cover for the Monday holiday.
And if that changes, how will people...
We would be putting that out through, you know, press releases, CCG TV, our website, and if we can, on regular TV also.
I know that when, that I got a call, for example, reminding me that Monday was a holiday and not garbage pickup. Could we do it also on that system if there's some...
Yes.
Something that happens between now and then? Thank you.
And Counselor, for those who have not signed up for the emergency notification system, they can call 311 and figure out how to get signed up, or go on the ColumbusGA.org website and sign up. Because when you sign up, you will get those phone calls. And, for example, I get it on my cellphone, on my landline. I get an email. And so, there are multiple ways that you'll get the message. And so, if you're not getting the message, it's because you have not signed up. So, we want to encourage citizens to do sign up for that.
Okay. Thank you.
And, Madam Mayor, and they have just changed that. I said the emergency shelter will open, would open tomorrow at 11:00. They've changed it, and they're going to open instead today, today at 5:00 p.m. with the same provisions.
Okay. Thank you. I was just trying to find more information out about Michael, but hopefully, we'll get that here in a minute. Okay. All right. I think that then turns it over to your agenda, and we should be ready for some items to vote on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got 10 items on our legislative agenda. And typically, the way we do it is that we share with you and the public what's on the agenda, and you vote on each item separately. And of course, between now and the 2019 legislative session that starts the second Monday in January, you can also, you can continue to bring things to add to the legislative agenda. And so, you should have copies or a list of items on the legislative agenda. And the first one is something that we've had before. It's not new. And Counselor Glenn Davis asked that we bring it back. It's an amendment of conflict of interest provision for redevelopment powers law. And that has to do with tax allocation districts, as most people know it. And so, the CCG, Columbus Consolidated Government, is requesting our delegation introduce and support legislation to revise and clarify the conflict of interest provisions in the redevelopment powers law, which addresses the participation of local government elective and appointed officials and employees in the creation and administration of tax allocation districts. And so, we're asking your approval on this particular item.
All right. We've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, can we do this by voting? Bruce? Okay. Please record your votes electronically. All right. And it does pass. Thank you.
Next, we've got Interstate 14, and we've had some conversation about Interstate 14. And we had...
We've got a motion in second to approve. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay. You may go ahead and record your votes electronically. And it passes.
We've also had conversation on removal of junk motorized vehicles by towing.
We've got a motion in second to approve the third item. And you may go ahead and record your votes electronically.
Fourth on the agenda is legislation imposing restrictions on step therapy fail-first protocols. We've had this before.
We've got a motion in second for approval of the legislation to impose restrictions on step therapy fail-first protocols. You may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
And the next one, I hope, will be unanimous, legislation imposing installation of small cell towers. We've had much conversation about it, and we see the results of what legislation can do.
Got a motion, second, to approve. You may record your votes electronically. And it does pass.
Next one is not a new one from last year, hotel tax relief for evacuees from storms or hurricanes or other disasters when an evacuation order is issued.
Okay. We've got a motion, second, to approval, for approval. We have Counselor Davis with discussion.
The City Manager, just so you'll know, I added this back on here. And the reason being, so I know the state already does exempt when a house is destroyed. But this is asking additional, an additional amendment that when a government entity requests evacuation, then it creates a hardship or a financial burden. I'm not talking about the ones that are out of these zones, evacuation zones, but if they're in an evacuation zone. So, that's the, that's why it's back on.
Sure. All right. And you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
And number seven is not new. It's nonpartisan primary ballots for all local elected officials, including constitutional officers. And this is one that Counselor Davis asked that we put back on.
All right. We've got a motion in second to approve. You may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Number eight is not new. It's hotel motel tax, other local option sales tax. We're requesting our delegation introduce legislation to amend the law so that it only applies to the local option sales tax referenda held after January 1, 2011, thereby leaving the original two exemptions contained in our 2004 legislation in place in Columbus. And that had to do with hotel lodging and vehicle sales. And this was one that Mayor Lex Kip Henderson had much concern over and wanted us to do this. And Counselor Davis is bringing this one back again as well.
We've got a motion in second for approval. You may, there's no discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
And number nine is repeal or modification of hotel destination fee imposed by House Bill 106 in the 2015 session. It's not new. It's the $5 per night fee on hotel lodging, which makes it an unfair advantage to border cities or to other states like Columbus and Alabama. And so, we're asking your approval.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And we have Counselor Davis with discussion.
The City Manager, I know in the past, they told us that there wasn't really an appetite for this. But the reason I'm putting this back and requesting to put this back on here is that a lot has happened in the last year. Now, we have these county-wide transportation taxes. There's other transportation taxes out there that are, that are being passed now that can help solve that problem, or what the intent of this destination fee was supposed to, to solve or mitigate in the Atlanta area. But now, you're seeing an increased approval of transportation taxes all over. So, the question is, should it be less? Should it be moved around? I mean, is there a different way to relieve that burden? Again, I said Muskogee County is probably one of the, is the leading county in the state of Georgia that gets hurt by this, this, I guess, law or imposed tax on...
Yes, absolutely.
Destination fee.
All right. Thank you. With that, you may go ahead and record your votes electronically. And it does pass.
And number 10 on our agenda, personal care homes. We've had much discussion about personal care homes. And so, we're asking our delegation to introduce statewide legislation that will require prompt notification of county and city police and fire departments, licensing departments, and planning and zoning departments upon licensing or licensing changes of childcare institutions, foster care homes, and personal care homes. This was requested by Counselor Davis, as we are continuing to deal with personal care homes in Muskogee County, Columbus.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion in second for approval. There's no discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
And so, on the GMA legislative agenda items, I say support it by CCG. It's not to get your vote on any of them, but wanting you to be aware of the things that GMA is playing, they're paying close attention to. Municipal broadband, short-term rentals or vacation rentals, which we're dealing with, expedited environmental protection division permitting process, stormwater utilities, disaster preparedness and response, increased technical and practical assistance by state environmental staff, greater regulations of solid waste transfer facilities. I'm not going to go through all of these, but I wanted to just call your attention. And you should have a copy of GMA's entire legislative agenda that addressed each one of these things in the information section of ECAP. And so, I would ask that you just pay attention to those from GMA. And if you've got any questions on any of the things that GMA is supporting for the 2019 legislative session, let me know. Let us know. I serve on the Georgia Municipal Association Legislative Policy Council to develop their legislative agenda for the state of Georgia, for all cities, more than 500 cities in Georgia. And so, let me know if there's something on that list you have concerns with, that we can address it with GMA. So, Madam Mayor, that, that's the legislative agenda. I've got a few other items on my agenda. We, the 2038 Comprehensive Plan, we shared that with you and the public here earlier. You had an update at a previous council meeting, and we're asking your approval that we can move this forward.
Okay. We've got a motion in second for approval. There appears to be no discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. And it passes. Yes. Would you like to, I'm sorry, let's, let me change the screen over. Can you put on Counselor Thomas's microphone, please?
This is not a discussion of the, of the document itself, but I just want to publicly thank the Planning Department, Director Jones and his staff for the tremendous work that they have done to bring this to us and to put this together. This is not something you do in a week's time. And I just wanted to say to Director Jones and his staff, good job, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. And I've got a grant. It's Solicited Generals Victim Witness Assistance Grant, $127,855, with a $5,287 matching funding from the 5% crime prevention, crime victim surcharge fund.
We've got a motion in second for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, you may record your votes electronically. We need one more. Oh, okay. All right. We're good. Thank you. It passes.
Okay. I've got a District Attorney Victim Witness Assistance Program grant. It's $349,897, along with $70,074 from the 5% crime victim surcharge fund, along with an income match of $17,400 from volunteer hours. We're asking your approval.
We've got a motion in second for approval. Is there any discussion regarding this item? Seeing none, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
I have another District Attorney Victim Witness Assistance Program grant. It's $48,649, and there's no match.
We've got a motion in second for approval. There's no discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. It passes.
And on purchases, I've got Pangrove Municipal Solid Waste Landfield, CND Area 3. And we're asking that you authorize us to execute a construction contract with McLeroy Equipment. It's $610,404 for a construction and demolition landfill sale at Pangrove Municipal Solid Waste Landfield. And so, this is what we...
We've got a motion in second for approval. There's no discussion on this issue, so you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
I have a refuse truck engine repair at $16,817,89. It's for an engine replaced or a problem.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. You may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
And I have lot clearing services. It's a contract with Aspire Landscaping as an additional contractor to provide lot clearing services. And it's not, as, on an as-needed basis, an estimated contract annual $7,280. And we're asking approval.
Is there a motion? Yeah. Okay. And then, a second? All right. There's a motion in second, so we have discussion with Counselor Davis. Well done. Counselor Davis?
The City Manager, I think Director Hudson's aware of this, but if we could maybe come up with a better tracking system, just for the vendor and the venue, some kind of reporting system that is to make sure that everybody's on the same side and, and an updated, well, that's not really what I'm looking to say, but a, for lack of a better term, a quick response from the vendor. response from the vendor that, that the matters have been taken care of.
Okay.
I think it's, it's being worked on, but just FYI.
Okay. Well, he's here, and he heard that, and I'll make sure that he follows up to do exactly that.
All right. With that, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
And the last item on purchases, purchasing agenda is replacement playground equipment. It's $149,973. It's for...
We've got a motion in second for approval. There is no discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
And, Madam Mayor, that concludes my agenda, and Counselor Woodson wanted me to mention that there's a Waverly Terrace Historic Neighborhood Meeting this evening at 6:15, and that's at 2829 Peabody Avenue. And that is, again, a Waverly Terrace Historic Neighborhood Meeting this evening at 6:15, 2829 Peabody Avenue. Madam Mayor and Counsel, that's all I have today.
All right. Thank you. We have Counselor Davis.
This City Manager, while we're finishing up your agenda, I just want to bring to your attention a matter that, well, it's happened in my district. I'm not sure if it's happened in other districts, but I've become aware of a hardship, and actually it's an extreme hardship, a financial hardship, due to some of these, these regulations that are out there, dealing with the cleaning of detention, retention ponds, all the stuff that we've talked about in the past. Again, prior discussion was about the financial hardships that's being placed on businesses and others. Now I'm finding out that it's being placed on entities that don't have the ability to, to raise money or even come up with money. And not just a year, but maybe two, three, four, five years. They have no other choice. So the question is, what do they do in situations like that? I mean, I don't see, I don't see that you can just shut them down or fine them. It just, it's not going to work. They just don't have the ability. These are nonprofits. These are entities that, that, like I said, they barely make it day in and day out. They contribute to our community, whether it's the spiritual welfare of our community, but, and actually, some of them, you can make the case that they provide services to the city. I'm not saying that they're exempt, but there is true hardship in this, that just, if you can't come up with the means to make it happen, what do you do? And, I mean, I, I'm having a hard time addressing this situation, but I don't know what else they, they can do, but maybe potentially come up with some kind of a long-term plan to address the situation, but it doesn't seem like there's a willingness to try to work with these entities out there. And I'm concerned about that.
Well, and Counselor Davis, I'll, I'll have to get with staff and have this conversation with them and, and see what options are available. I, I don't have a response at the moment.
And I don't want to name names. I'm just kind of drawing a, drawing a little picture here so you'd understand, but I'll, I'll get with you afterwards and, and give you the name of this entity, but I'm sure there's probably some in some other districts, there's people who are struggling or will be struggling as well because they just can't, they can't, they can't meet the, the regulation that's been placed on them.
Okay. And we'll make sure that's a referral as well. And Deputy City Manager Hodge is saying she'll, she'll respond.
All right. Thank you. We have Counselor Huff.
Just a quick reminder that the domestic violence group will have their walk tonight and vigil. If you're interested in walking, you will report to Country's BBQ on Broad around 5:00. The walk will start at 5:30 back to the Government Center, and the vigil will begin at the Government Center Courtyard from, at 6:00 for probably, from 6:00 to about 7:00. So that's from 5:00, 5:30 to about 7:00 tonight, the domestic violence walk-in program at the, between Country's BBQ and the Government Center Courtyard. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that update. And now we will turn it over to Lindsey. We have the Clerk of the Council.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, on the Clerk's agenda, item number one is a bioshetch for Mr. Carson Cummings. This is Mayor Tomlinson's nominee for the Ironworks Convention and Trade Center Authority. Items two through six are memorandums for upcoming board terms that will expire at the end of December. Items seven through 10 are street closures. Item number 11 is a resignation of Mr. Mike Peacock from his seat as the District Six Rep on the Recreation Advisory Board.
Let's see. We've got Counselor Huff.
On items, I guess, two through, on the board appointments, will you start receiving those prior to the next meeting, or we make the appointments, I mean, the nomination at the next meeting?
Those seats will be open at the next meeting to receive nominations.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Can we, can I get a motion to receive this resignation for Mr. Peacock, please?
Move the table.
Got a motion in second. All those in favor, please state aye.
We also have an add-on resignation for Ms. O'Shields Watson from her position on the Personal Review Board.
All those in favor, please state aye.
We have minutes of various boards that can be received.
All right. That's the Airport Commission, the Board of Tax Assessors, the Housing Authority of Columbus, and the Recreation Advisory Board. All those in favor, please state aye.
On the Columbus Ironworks Convention and Trade Center Authority, Mayor Tomlinson is nominating Carson Cummings, and he can be confirmed.
All those in favor, please state aye.
On Community Development Advisory Council, Districts 3 and 6 are still open for nominees. On the Circle Commission, we still have two seats available, and we are working with them and the mayor's staff on getting these seats filled. For the Hospital Authority of Columbus, we have the seats of Mike Welch and Dr. John Kingsbury. They are open, and they, in order to send these over, we have to get three nominees for each seat, and we have not received recommendations for those.
Counselor Davis.
You haven't received recommendations, or you, I thought some lists were sent in with some names.
That was actually for the Medical Center Hospital Authority.
Medical Center. This is Hospital Authority.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay.
Well, I, wait a minute, Madam Mayor. Well, this, this is the Hospital Authority. You've got three places under there. I think they bring us three names, and we...
They do normally, and we...
Approve them, right?
We have not received names for the Hospital Authority of Columbus yet, but we have received for the Medical Center.
For the medical.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm sorry.
It's confusing with them coming at the same time.
Well, it is. I, I, I thought it was just one entity. Evidently, it's two.
They're separate.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. On the Housing Authority of Columbus, Ms. Tiffany Stacy is eligible to succeed herself, and this is actually the mayor's appointment. I apologize for that typo.
Okay. Is she, does she want to serve?
Yes, ma'am. As far as I know, she does.
Okay. Have you talked with her, or?
I have not been able to get her on the phone.
Well, why don't you just get her on the phone, and if, if she's willing to serve, I certainly will nominate her.
Okay. I'll make a note of that.
Yeah.
On the Land Bank Authority, we've got two seats open. Justin Curry, he is not eligible to succeed himself, and neither is Carson Cummings. Justin's seat is the mayor's appointment, and Mr. Cummings, that is Counsel's appointment. On the Recreation Advisory Board, Districts 1 and 5 still need nominees. On the Medical Center Hospital Authority, we have two seats open. For the first one, Ms. Hudson, we've got recommendations of Dr. Wright, Mr. Solomon, and Mr. Sayers.
All right. We've got a motion in second. All those in favor, please state aye.
For the seat of Mr. McCune, we've got recommendations of Mr. Wade, Mr. Solomon, and Mr. Sayers.
We've got a motion in second. All those in favor, please state aye.
We will send these over to the authority. On the Tree Board, Ms. Cassie Renfro, her seat is still open. We received a referral from Counselor Woodson at the last meeting, and Keep Columbus Beautiful has been contacted, and they are working on a recommendation. For Uptown Facade Board, we've got one, excuse me, we have four seats that are open now, or, excuse me, two seats that are open for Uptown Business Association and two seats that they are eligible. We've got Alan Udlie, excuse me. He's eligible to succeed himself, and Ms. Josina Pittman-Green. These are the Counsel's appointments.
Hold on a second. We've got Counselor Thomas.
This is the Uptown Business Association Rep and the Uptown Columbus Inc. Rep. Do they send us names?
Whenever their seats are coming, whenever they're open and someone is not eligible, then they send us names. We have not received any for the two that are not eligible. The other ones, they normally just keep recommending reappointment unless they have...
But we have not received anything on these two.
No. That's the last two that are not eligible.
I'm not sure what, if, if they, they recommend?
They recommend when the seat is vacant, whenever they currently have someone in there.
Well, all four of these seats will be vacant because their terms are up.
Right. The first two are eligible.
I know they're eligible to succeed themselves, but the seat's vacant. And does, does Uptown not say to us, we want this person returned to the board?
Yes, ma'am. They do.
And they have not done that at this point?
When we had a conversation about a month or so, they did not make a recommendation as far as someone to replace those seats. So they seemed to be in consensus that they were fine with them being reappointed.
Okay. I would request that we hold on these until maybe you have another conversation with them and...
I can do that.
Make sure that they, that they do want these folks back. I'm, I'm, you know, pretty positive that they would, but if they make that appointment, I think we need to honor that.
I understand. I can take care of that.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis, are you good with that?
I'm, I'm okay with it. I see one of the recommendations.
Okay. On the Youth Advisory Council, Counselor Barnes is nominating Rihanna Williams, and she can be confirmed.
We've got a motion in second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
And also in the Youth Advisory Council, the only other seat open is District 2, and that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. Great. Anything further? Seeing that there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor, please state aye. Great. We stand adjourned. Thank you all.